Good afternoon, everybody. It's quite a full room, which is a good thing. Um, I would like to welcome everyone to the March regular meeting of the Calgary Police Commission.
I would like to call this meeting to order and ask that everyone's sort of their mic phones are really in the seat.
My name is Sean Cornet, and I am the Chair of the Commission. I am joined today by Commissioners Amtel Siddiqui, Marilyn North-Pagan, Susan Mallon, Kim Lynch Proctor, Heather Campbell, Theresa Rossell, TJ Zhang, Jeff French, Cherie Nice and Jordan, and Councilors Jennifer Weiness and Raj Dollywall. Chief Newfelt is away this week, so the Calgary Police Service representatives are led by Acting Chief Constable Chad Toffick. Acting Chief, would you please introduce those you expect to speak during today's meeting?
Thanks very much, Chair. Uh, we have a whole group from recruiting that will speak in the uh public session here, and across the board, we have Executive Director Catherine Murphy, uh Director Mike Nun, Deputy Chief Raj Gill, Superintendent Smart, Deputy Chief Katie McCollum, Deputy Chief Paul Cook, Acting Deputy Chief Cliff O'Brien, and that's it.
Awesome. Full room. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for being here. For those not familiar with our role, the Calgary Police Commission is a body of ten community members and two city councillors appointed by city council. We provide independent citizen governance and oversight of the Calgary Police Service on behalf of all Calgarians. To protect, to protect the political neutrality of the police, Alberta's Police Act requires that the police chief report directly to us instead of city council. We provide direction to the service through the chief, police policies, monitoring of the police complaint process, and approval of how the police budget is spent. Today is one of eight regular meetings we have each year to openly discuss police governance and oversight matters with the service's leadership and to hear from the public. We also have several private monthly committee meetings where commissioners work more directly with the service on various matters that cannot be discussed publicly. I'd like to begin with our Indigenous nations' acknowledgement. Our Commissioners' meeting is today on the traditional territory of the Nittisapi, made up of Siksika, Bagani, and Gynai First Nations, the Arahe Nakota comprised of the Chiniki, Berespa, and Wesley First Nations, and the Tutsina First Nation. These are the people who made a treaty with the Crown, forming Treaty VII Territory. The city of Calgary is also homeland to the historic Northwest Métis and to Métis Nation of Alberta, Region III. We are committed to doing our part to address the inequity and intergenerational trauma caused by past and current wrongs to support reconciliation with all Indigenous people who share this land with us. Our commission also condemns racism and prejudice in all forms and is committed to being anti-racist. We stand in solidarity with all Calgarians who are Black, Indigenous, or other people of color. For those joining us for the first time, allow me to provide a brief overview of the meeting format. The public session of this meeting is being livestreamed, and a recording will be posted online, so we can make it available to those unable to attend. There will be several presentations from the Calgary Police Service, Commission members, and Commission staff. Commissioners will have a chance to ask questions or make comments after each one. Once we have completed the presentations, we will move to the public participation portion of the meeting. Those who are registered to speak will then be called on by name, and will have a chance to either ask a question or make a presentation for our consideration. Following the public participation, we will close the public portion of the meeting with the chief and I taking questions from the media. Everyone is welcome to observe the media availability, but only media can participate. To start our agenda items, excuse me, I will now call for declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest from the Commissions, Commissioners. Hearing and seeing no declarations, I will now ask for approval of the agenda. Does any member of the Commission wish to request an amendment to the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, I will now ask for approval of the consent agenda. For those viewing today's meeting, the consent agenda is a list of routine items and reports that all Commissioners agree can be accepted without more discussion or a separate vote. Does any member of the Commission wish to request an item on the consent agenda be brought forward for discussion? Mr. Zhang?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, item three point two, Finance Audit Committee Summary Report. Uh, I believe other than the attendee names, all the other information from the previous months is now the February, no, it's not a March FIA meeting minutes. It's actually the February FIA minutes.
Okay.
I talked to Chair Campbell, and she's going to review again of all the versions, including this one.
Okay. All right. So have note, and we'll make that amendment. Thank you very much, Commissioner Zhang. Are there any other amendments or items to be brought forward? Seeing none, I declare both the agenda and consent agenda approved as presented and amended. As I move into my Chair's report, I want to start by sending our heartfelt condolences to the families, friends, and colleagues of Edmonton Police Service Constables Travis Jordan and Brett Ryan. These two young officers were responding to a fairly routine call when they were callously murdered. The incident is another tragic and painful reminder of the unpredictable environment that police officers work in, where some calls go from routine to dangerous in a matter of seconds. No police officer should ever have to lay down their life in the service of their community, yet we are now seeing that happen over and over in Canada. It's something we must never accept as normal. Our hearts are with the families of fallen officers, our colleagues at the Edmonton Police Commission, and the Edmonton Police Service in this difficult time. Our thoughts are also with those in Calgary's policing community as line-of-duty deaths, especially so close to home, undoubtedly bring back memories of the officers we have lost here and the risks faced by those who serve. Please take care of yourselves, each other, and your families. Know that Calgarians mourn with you and are deeply grateful for the work you do every day to protect our community. This past month has been somewhat routine one for our commission. A few Commissioners had the honour of attending a celebration for many of those at the service that have been promoted in the last couple of years. It was great to see the high quality of people we have contributing to the policing of our city. We also spent time meeting with city councillors alongside the service to advocate for the next phase of changing how our community supports people in crisis. We are very excited about the work underway to bring more partners together to provide wraparound supports to Calgarians in crisis at one centralized location. Thank you to all the councillors for making time for us. And finally, we were pleased to see the province announce their intention to require that all police services in Alberta use body-worn cameras. Last summer, the Minister of Justice visited police headquarters with us to learn more about Calgary's body-worn camera program, and it's good to see them now embracing the technology. The Calgary Police Service has led the country when it comes to large-scale adoption of body-worn cameras. Our commission and city council saw cameras as a priority when discussions here started almost a decade ago, and we have invested significant funding to allow the service to acquire and use them. The results here have been outstanding, with a noticeable change in the average time it takes to investigate and resolve complaints about police conduct. Most Calgarians cannot even imagine their police service not having body, body-worn cameras at every call. We look forward to further discussion with the province on their plans and helping other commissions across the province implement this direction. Before I close my Chair's report, I also want to take a moment to recognise the hard work that has happened at the service over the past month to deliver on the priorities our commission and community have set for them. One of the key concerns of Calgarians this past year has been the staggering increase in gun crimes. The service reported to us last year on all the work they are doing to stop the violence, seize legal firearms, and hold those responsible for the crimes accountable. So far this year, the service has seen thirty-seven percent fewer shootings than they had at this time last year, and twenty firearms were taken off our streets last month alone. Thank you to all the units across the service working so hard to stop gun violence in our community. From the community outreach and youth intervention to the quick response and investigations when shootings occur, you're making our community safer. Homicide investigations have also been able to lay charges in both of twenty-twenty-three's homicides, including the killing of Judy Maers. The significant work that went into solving these cases quickly helps bring some closure to both victims' families and the community. Investigators' work also resulted in three historical homicides being solved this year, and we're pleased to see that the service never stops working on old cases so that people can be brought to justice no matter how much time has passed. The service's hate crimes investigators have also been busy laying charges in two high-profile incidents this month, including one where a woman was randomly assaulted because of the color of her skin while waiting for a bus. It was encouraging to hear that three bystanders intervened to stop the attack before the police arrived. That, along with the charges laid by the service, show that Calgarians will not tolerate this kind of behaviour in our city. Along the same lines, frontline officers and members of the service's diversity resource team have been kept busy lately with ongoing divisive protests at public facilities. These situations put officers in difficult positions as they have to balance the need to keep the peace and protect public safety with the need to respect people's rights of assembly and expression. This is not an easy job, but we thank you for being there to keep these situations from escalating even further. We also thank you for taking action when legal lines are crossed. The service has also continued working closely with Calgary Transit and now the Alberta Sheriffs to address crime and disorder on transit and downtown. Police operations continue to target drug trafficking at transit stations, and uniformed officers are patrolling more hotspots. While it will take time, continued collaboration with our partners and improved social supports to turn the tide on the problems we are seeing in this area, and we are grateful for the work that's been done to date. There's been so much other great work done in this month as well, including solving of a hit-and-run, significant crime prevention efforts targeting fraud and break-ins, and even the arrest of a man who was robbing banks with a snake. While I can't mention everything, thank you to all members of the service who have worked hard to respond to the concerns of our community and to protect public safety. On behalf of the commission and the community, your work is noticed and appreciated. With that, I will conclude my Chair's report, and will now move on to the service's presentations. We are pleased to be hearing today from the service on how recruiting went last year to fill both vacant police officer and civilian staff positions. Recruitment has been an area of focus for both the commission and the service coming out of the pandemic. Hiring in the past few years has been restricted due to financial constraints, even when our city grew in size and population. The COVID-nineteen health measures then further restricted the number of new police officers that could be trained, increasing the number of vacant positions. Staffing shortages caused by these factors and increased turnover have taken a toll on everyone at the service as growing workloads have been added on top of all the other personal stresses that came with the past few years. We've heard clearly from members of the service and members of the community that more police officers and support staff are needed to meet the needs of our city. Securing funding for more positions was one step we took with city council last fall, and now increased recruitment is the next step. Our commission has also made it clear that we want Calgary's police to reflect the diversity of the community that they serve. It is a goal shared by the service, and we look forward to hearing more today on how the service is reaching out to those who have not typically considered policing a career option. Acting Chief Toffick, could you please go ahead and introduce your first presenters?
Thanks very much, Chair, and uh, thank you very much for the kind remarks in regard to all the hard work that our members have been doing over the past month. We are very appreciative of the efforts that they make, and they make our leadership team very proud each and every day. Also, I'd just like to acknowledge your recognition of the impact of the loss of Constable Brett Ryan and Constable Travis Jordan in Edmonton. Uh, as you know, that has a profound impact, not only there, but with our employees as well. Uh, aid police officers dying in the line of duty over the past six months is far too many. One would be far too many, so I really appreciate you and the commission acknowledging that. Uh, so without further ado, we'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Gill, who will introduce his team. He'll do the recruiting presentation.
Thanks, Chief. Uh, thanks, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Um, I'm proud to uh get an opportunity to introduce my team today uh in the Bureau of People and Organizational Development and the executive directors who lead those teams to talk about the great work that our teams have done over the past two years, uh, two, two and a half years, to really uh, work hard to modernize and improve our processes around staffing, recruitment, and training. And uh, and we have lots of successes we'd like to share with you today. We get the opportunity to share the successes we've had both on the sworn and civilian recruitment side. Uh, and, and we've, we've come so far that I would, I would dare say that we've slowly made our way to become leaders in this space where other police agencies are now calling upon us to see how we're doing business both on all those areas I've mentioned, plus some of our work around EDNI and other areas, and I'd be happy to share that with you as well. Uh, and, and finally, before I hand this over to the team, uh, this does not happen without the impressive people that work for the Calgary Police for Police Service, both sworn and civilian employees, and the work that we've done with both internal stakeholders and external stakeholders and advisors to help build us to where we are today. Uh, today or tonight, you're going to meet some of those impressive uh employees that I just spoke about, and uh, we'd be happy to uh answer any of your questions after the presentation. So with that said, uh, we're going to start off with civilian recruitment. I'm going to hand this over to Executive Director Andre Urquhart to uh have some opening remarks, introduce her team, and then we'll provide the presentation.
It'll take us just a minute to um have the presenters come in. We've, we're juggling space here today, so just give us a second here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the invitation to share our twenty-twenty-two civilian staffing accomplishments. I'll quickly introduce members of our team uh that will be presenting today, and then just make a few opening uh remarks to you, and then, and then we'll turn it over to them. Uh, here today is our team lead of talent acquisition, Jamie McKinney, and our consultant of talent acquisition, uh, Jason Holt. The Human Resource Division is committed to championing the collaborative delivery of our HR services in a manner that embraces diversity while demonstrating the value of all within the organisation. Our strength comes from our people and leveraging technology to create an empowering, transparent, and trusted experience. As you know, we've reorganized the Human Resource Division to meet the goals and objectives that have risen out of this mission. Part of that reorg is reimagining the Human Resource Services sections and the priority activities of the Talent Acquisition Team. Twenty-twenty-two was a very big year for our team with a significant amount of hiring to ensure that we have the competencies within the team to meet our goals and objectives, breaking down critical barriers between and amongst our stakeholders and partners to deliver a better employee experience, and improving workflows to ensure we deliver services effectively and transparently. I'll turn it over to Jamie and Jason to share with you our twenty-twenty-two civilian recruitment results.
Thank you for the introduction. Uh, this, this afternoon, we are pleased to share with you some twenty-twenty-two highlights from the Talent Acquisition Team civilian. In twenty-twenty-two, we restructured the Talent Acquisition Team, and we created new roles to better serve our hiring managers. We created branding, advertising, expanded our social media presence, attended career fairs, and made connections with diverse communities. Through these efforts, we are proud to have attended twenty-two outreach events. We had a total of sixty-nine percent increase to our total number of postings, and we had a hundred and seventy-two percent increase to total number of civilian hires. I'm now going to hand it over to Jason to expand on these further.
Great, thanks. Uh, are you able to bring up our presentation? Thank you. So you can see, as, as Jamie just outlined, uh, we started doing some outreach events. Um, last year, Sworn started to do some, and we were easily able to, to piggyback on, on their efforts and, and start doing some outreach to talk about uh what a great place CPS is to work even as a civilian. Um, uh, we increased job postings sixty-nine percent from twenty-one, and we had a hundred and seventy-two percent increase in hires from twenty-one. So there's three things uh we just really want to briefly share with you. We want to talk about some outreach efforts, um, job postings and efficiencies around job postings, and then um we want to just share a little bit about hiring. Um, so um, if you have worked in HR or you have been a hiring manager, uh, probably you know about posting and praying, right? So, you know, we, we, we identified that we need somebody to come and work in, you know, a certain aspect, and um, and so we ask HR to post the position, and then we just sit back and hope that the right person is going to walk through our door, right? That's not what we're doing anymore, right? We uh have a clear strategy around um how we want to attract top talent to come and work at the CPS as a civilian, because really what we're doing is we are, we want to be that support system to our CPS sworn members, right? So it is really important to us that we are finding top talent. So how are we doing this? Uh, we've partnered with Sworn in some outreach events. Uh, we are creating uh recruiting materials based on the principles of EDI. Uh, we have expanded our efforts to try and reach as broad an audience and diverse audience as we can, because that's where we will really find success. Um, and then we've developed a LinkedIn strategy to take a, a, a more active approach, uh, especially when it comes to filling what we might consider a hard-to-fill position. So our job postings, really, uh, we want to talk about efficiency. So Jamie touched on the fact that in this past year in twenty-two, we really um fleshed out what our talent acquisition team looks like, and now with a solid team in place, um, we have been able to update job postings. So if you've been on the uh city of Calgary career page, uh, you know, uh, just about a year ago, uh, there was no indication of, of what jobs belong to us. We're just part of all of the jobs that are out there, and one of the things we wanted to do, particularly to piggyback on the efforts of our sworn members who are out in the community, talking about CPS is a great place to work. When we direct people to our website, to our career page, we want to make sure that they know that they got to the right place. So we announce Calgary Police Service in our job post. It might sound really simple, but it's made a really big impact. Um, we were able to work through a hundred and fifty-nine job postings. Uh, we've really utilized social media to create a civilian presence. Uh, we've partnered with our, with our sworn uh counterparts to utilize LinkedIn and Indeed, uh, and then we, you know, we really want to support our growth positions. But this is just a quick visualization of uh civilian postings. The orange line represents uh twenty-twenty-two. The blue line is twenty-twenty-one. You can see just a, a, a really clear um efficiency right there. Um, and then finally, we just want to let you know about, about hires. So by way of our efforts to really solidify this team, refine our process and team building, we were able to secure a hundred and seventy-seven total hires for twenty-two. Uh, we filled forty-three of the sixty-eight civilian growth positions, and to date, we have increased that number. I don't know exactly what that is, but we're still working to finish that off. Uh, we streamlined the recruiting and hiring process by taking on the facilitation of the recruitment interview and selection course, and we are rapidly trying to uh roll that out to anybody at CPS that is a hiring manager that manages civilians. Um, and then, of course, uh, we have tried to improve our onboarding pro- process uh by things like revising offer letters and just making sure that the experience of the candidate is at that high level, uh, so that there's a positive reflection on, on CPS and, and how a civilian candidate would be moving to the process. And so then we'll just show you, just to close, um, just a five-year recruiting trend. So you, you can see, of course, there are a couple of years during pandemic where that would impact this, but we're quite happy with the um end result of twenty-twenty-two at a hundred and seventy-seven hires. Thank you very much. We'll be back to answer questions.
I actually think we're open for questions right now. Just uh, so, so hang tight, both of you. Um, thank you so much for the presentation, and uh, you know, numbers don't, numbers are numbers, but they don't really speak to the absolute amount of effort. And, and Jason touched on the fact that um our employee experience uh and our employee journey for individual starts um before they become an employee with the organisation, and it's really important for us to make sure that that employee experience is, is as frictionless as possible. Uh, so please, we're uh eager to answer any questions you may have.
Chair, if I could just jump in quickly, I, I, I know Jason went through it really well and really quickly. Uh, I just want to, you know, just to give the scope of the work that our folks have done, a hundred and fifty-nine job postings, twenty thousand and four hundred and fifty-one applicants. So that's a lot of processing the team has to do and still try to get our staffing actions done in a seven-week period for those unionized positions. Now, open to questions.
Great. Um, questions. So I've got Commissioner Siddiqui and then Commissioner Campbell. Please, go ahead.
Thank you for that presentation. I think everyone knows that recruitment is my favourite word, so thank you. Um, two questions for you. You talked about outreach, doing outreach a little differently. Can you give some examples of how you are doing that differently from what's been done before? And also, how, within that, how are you reaching diverse communities? So that's my first question, and then I have a second one after that.
There's a follow-up question. Wow, okay. Devil already.
Told you it was my hair.
I'm nervous. So, um, uh, Jamie touched on, and I touched a little bit, we are a new team. Um, it, it, it has existed in some form, but really talent acquisition is, is somewhat new, at least in the version that we're in. So immediately what we did last year was we identified um, where are we getting our current talent from, right? Which is no surprise. It's Indeed and it's LinkedIn, right? And if we want uh, you know, a, a group of people that maybe looks a little different than that, um, where are we going? So we quickly identified some community organizations that we already have some um inroads with, probably by way of sworn members. So we have reached out to women's organizations, uh, two S LGBTQIA+ communities, uh, different uh racialized organizations. Um, and just we're, we're, we're in the process of building bridges with them and letting them know what a great place CPS is to work. All the work that we're doing internally, um, uh, you know, around promoting diversity and, 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 and offering a really great place to work for everybody. So we are actively reaching out to really diverse communities. Okay? Yeah.
Thank you for that. Uh, the follow-up question is, you've recruited all these great people now. How are you retaining them in that first year? You talked about your onboarding being really good, but what are you doing beyond that to make sure that they stay with CPS and continue their career?
Yeah. Do you want to take?
Can I have this? Sure, I can take that. That's a really great question, and one of the things that um we really believe is that uh, HR doesn't stop HR when that person, we turn that individual over to their hiring manager. And so it's that walking alongside their hiring manager to support employees and making sure that employees, wherever their journey is and wherever they're at in that journey, that they have the opportunity to grow, whether it's professional development, whether it's learning something new about really within their own work area. And we have a, a number of new folks within our area, and one of the questions we ask is what would you like to learn about within your own um division? So even, even within my own division, what aren't you seeing that you would like to learn about? And so um providing our uh hiring managers with those, with those leading questions to support their individuals, and then having uh check-ins with, with our new folks to make sure that their needs are, are being met. And one of the things that Rory is going to talk about is our probationary advocates supporting our sworn members as they, as they come new into the system. But it's, it's all of our responsibility at the organization to be uh focused on retention, not just HR. And so we're really trying to work with our hiring managers to have, to have that frame uh about uh, you know, making sure their individuals are in the right spots.
And Commissioner, if I can just add on to that one, Andre talked very well about the, how we support the individual, but that doesn't go without how we support the organisation. So our work around EDNI, inclusion, and respectful workplaces, what we've done the last couple of years to make sure that our environment, there is no systemic bias, and how we get reduced of systemic barriers for opportunities within the organisation. And then something that we could probably discuss at a future uh uh training, our, our future commission date, is the uh, the work that Rory is leading in terms of training and development, so that the call to lead one hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four, four hundred level courses, where we're actually working with uh team leads and managers and, and directors and executive directors and superintendents and every rank, every rank and every civilian uh cat, uh rank and level as well to what's the manager's role in creating that environment where people want to stay with the Calgary Police Service? So that, those were some of the work that we're doing, in addition with Andre said, around retention.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Campbell, and then we'll go to Commissioner North-Pagan. Thank you very much, uh, Commissioner Campbell, and then we'll go to Commissioner North Pagan.
Thanks very much, Chair. Um, and Commissioner Siddiqui uh took my question, but I I always have a, I always have three, so I'm good. Um, I think something that you'd said around uh looking at the the recruits and both civilian and sworn to ensure that they they look like, they look, they look different. And I would suggest that it's actually not looking different, but that they look like Calgary and think like Calgary. And it's about reflecting Calgary as a community in our police service. So thinking about that and knowing that many of the, particularly the civilian roles that are performed within the Calgary Police Service um are rules that would be performed outside in any large corporation with a budget and um operational um heft of the CPS. How are we ensuring that the positions and the scope of the role um and the work environment and the experience are appropriately reflected in the overall compensation for those roles?
Uh, thank you for the question. Um, you know, total rewards and total compensation is always a a subject of discussion, especially in a publicly funded organization. So one of the things, I just wanna go back to um uh your comment and Jason's comment is um diversity for us also, a- as you mentioned, is also diversity of experience and diversity of thought. Um, and and creating the opportunity for really strong and um robust conversation and thinking and critical thought um is is something that we're very alive to and and try to um recruit for uh within the organization. But um from a compensation standpoint, we have many um great uh total reward compensation strategies that really speak to not just a salary piece, but also the uh well-being um and work-life balance and some flexibility in the organization that many of our corporate uh partners don't offer. And we are finding that we do have a competitive advantage over that. And and we just finished hiring a full complement of lawyers um to CPS because of of tho- those opportunities and the things that we offer from a total comp uh and total rewards package. But I certainly know Jason um sells that every day for us in CPS. So I will allow him to uh respond as well, if you have, Jason.
Hey, for sure. Um, is it Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah.
Yes. You know, uh, uh, forgive me for, you know, maybe semantics. Exactly what you said is exactly what we are 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 aiming for, is a reflection of uh that we are who we serve, right? A hundred percent. Um, so yeah, one of the things that we're really trying to do is 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 like everybody in the world, utilize social media. And when you think about how we use social media, it's like as fast as you can, right? Um, so we partnered with PAMRU, so uh Public Affairs and Media Relations Unit, to create what we hope um is a very compelling branded imagery to use out in the marketplace. And we've also partnered internally um with with our own um departments in EDI and anti-racism to reflect back to us, you know, some opinion around the the imagery that we're using. And then we're also just really trying to high-level speak to the public, people that are looking for work or could be influenced to come look for work about some of the really amazing things that 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 we offer that are very competitive when compared to to the workforce, things like compressed work week and hybrid work options and just the total rewards package. So we're kind of hitting that at a at a high level and seeing some really good success from that.
Thanks very much for that. Um, my last question, um, the saying goes, culture eats strategy for lunch or something like that. Um, CPS is going through a substantial cultural shift as are many police services across Canada and across the world. Um, particularly, I would say, you know, the Met Police in the UK are about to about to feel one um substantially. How are recruits responding to the challenge of coming into an organization that is on on moving water?
Yeah, thank you for that question. And and this uh this might be a a tag your it Rory question, but I'll answer it from a civilian uh perspective. Um, and and really, it's about authenticity from my perspective is, um, you know, every workplace has has um great things about it. Every workplace is on a journey and and struggling in other areas. And we aren't any different than any other workplace. But I think it's about being authentic to our, the people coming forward to us to say, this is who we are, we want you to be part of us because we see such great competency and we see you making a difference in the lives of the people we serve and in the lives of the people that are part of the organization to make it be, to make it better. And so, you know, for for us and for me, that's the most important thing is is we move forward together. Um, and we move forward and make our organization better together. Um, and and uh, you know, support others when they're down and cheer on others when they're up. And and that's really, I think, how we are going to change the culture uh and the narrative around some of our workplace issues that are workplace issues from a societal perspective. I don't think CPS necessarily owns them. Um, but from a, from a HR perspective, I I hope that answers your question. But uh from a recruit perspective, I'll let Rory answer that.
Hi, Commissioner. Um, to me, it's very much linked to your your previous question around that diversity of thought, experience, et cetera. Uh, similar to on the civilian side, we actively go out and and seek that. And when they're in the classroom, we make it clear from day one and all the way through their training and in-service that that experience and diversity of thought uh background gives us that competitive advantage. Um, and ultimately, that is also gonna take us where we need to go, not ultimately where we are now. Um, so even the classroom on day one, we are, you're a team, but you need to be yourself. And as Andrea said, be authentic. If we're in that diversity of thought to make each other better and ultimately come up with better solutions. And then even when we're in the street and doing our job for those first couple of years of our service, that's ultimately those links with emotional intelligence and bring that to the front as well. And so there's lots of red threads throughout training, uh, and then they build upon them in service as well. Specifically, as definitely um Gil mentioned earlier around leadership development, our huge red thread, and that is emotional intelligence. Um, and ultimately using that to to empower our police officers and and continue that journey of culture change. But we know that leadership development and culture change go hand in glove as well. So that's how we're ultimately uh implementing internally too.
Thanks very much. Back to you, Chair.
Sorry, Commissioner North Pagan, if you can, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I would definitely agree with you CPS, but uh within the data and in this type of programming, that the data is just numbers, especially with everything that's going on uh around this uh this type of project. Um, I guess I'm just curious, you mentioned that you are now providing outside advice to these other police organizations. Um, and and seeing that CPS is ahead within this, what would your advice be to these police forces in uh when they would ask what the uh immediate challenges are in starting up this kind of uh systemic change?
Well, that's uh, that's not an easy question, uh, Commissioner, but I'll I'll take a stab at it, I think. Um, but I think it's just starting. It's starting to do the work and starting to do the heavy lifting. And sometimes they're not comfortable conversations. And sometimes uh you're you're pushing people into areas that are difficult to talk about and difficult to uh uh to really work on. When we talk about um uh certain tasks in our organization, i- it's straightforward to see the task of what you need to do. But when we talk about cultural change and and uh making sure that we are an inclusive and and welcoming environment, uh, we have respect workplaces, people feel valued and and respected when they come to the workplace. Uh, tho- those are continuous efforts, and you can't take a day off on those efforts. And uh building in, building out our uh internal EDI program, the anti-racism work that Deputy McClellan is leading across the service. But also making uh our employees feel like this is not happening to them, it's happening with them. And that's the inclusion piece around ED and I. And we don't do this alone. We, as you know, we have a strong partnership with uh the University of Calgary and their Art of the Nudge, who've been walking along this path with us with us for uh for just over three years now. And so we have external guidance, we have external expertise. Um, uh, we just partnered up with the, actually, the first police service uh outside of Ontario to join and organize, uh to join the police services of Ontario as they're doing some work around equity, diversity and inclusion and respectful workplaces uh with with external legal counsel that provide advice, external consultants that provide advice. Um, and we're actually going out there, uh, Turginder Bowler, from our uh Office of Respect Inclusion is going out there in April and uh to see where we can share our best practices, uh, cause they've asked about those and and some of the work that we've done, but also to see if we can continue to pick up uh or learn from their best practices to continue to move our programs forward and just building those partnerships. Um, and and to Commissioner Campbell's point, we're not, we're not doing this on our own. Like, there's many organizations going down the same road, and we all have to learn from each other. And I think that's probably one of the biggest things is, we we haven't done this in, two things, we haven't done this in isolation, and we haven't done this as a made-in-Calgary police solution. We've actually gone out and and found the experts and listened and talked to stakeholders. And uh Rory will talk about that in his presentation as well, uh, in in terms of recruitment. Talked to our stakeholders and asked us to see where's our blind spots that we're not seeing, and they're helping us. So uh, so don't be afraid to get help, uh, engage with your stakeholders. Um, be academic-led, be research-led, um, and also work in collaboration with other agencies, because we're all on this journey together. And some people are diff- and everyone's at a different place and uh working, working together. And we really tried, as I said earlier, we tried really not to make this a meet-in CPS solution where we all looked across each other at the table, saying, well, what are we gonna do? We actually brought people in to help us on that journey. I hope that, hope that answered your question.
Deputy, I can maybe add a few points as well, just around specifically to recruitment. Uh, Deputy is completely right with regards to other services across the the whole nation, reaching out to CPS to uh uh ask, wh- what are we doing and how are we managing to get the results that we are seeing? For last year, for example, a hundred and thirty-five officers is remarkable. There's no other service that's even in that league. But we are partners, uh, and ultimately, we are, there's no secrets. We have been sharing our playbook with them, uh, because we know that ultimately, if the more that we can get as an organization, as a profession, the more it's ultimately gonna lift us all up. And we see it many um, many applications per year in a region of about thirty. Our experienced officers spend a couple of years at different services and bounce around, and there's nothing wrong with that whatsoever. Uh, the one piece of advice that we give to them is a, is around, it sounds a bit cliche, but it's imperative that they have this uh mindset. It is a marathon, not a sprint, specifically around the ED and I recruitment. We are recruiting families, we're recruiting communities, we're changing mindsets. So a quick uh campaign for six months won't change anything. You will not see any results specifically in the way that sworn recruitment works, where we have our outreach, they then apply, then we have at least a six to sort of eight-month to application process to, before they even hit the classroom. So if you're doing this just to ultimately say that you are, have so many percentage of recruits or applicants are from these diverse communities, well, ultimately, that's the wrong approach, and you're not going to see those results in the short term. So that's ultimately the the biggest lesson that we portray to a lot of our um our partners across the country.
Thank you very much, and and thank you for the presentation on the civilian side. It's been uh, it's been a long journey and and more to do. I know it's um, having been in HR at one point, I totally understand. Uh, but yeah, it's um, it's a long haul. So thank you so much for all the work you've done and appreciate, and um. Sorry, Shuri, did you, you had a question for the civilian side?
My, um, actually, it's probably for Rory and and his team can answer it. Um, eh, so the the remark that you just made in terms of um, it being a continuous project uh pro- program, I guess one of the things that caught me in 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 the presentation was the fact that you there, you identified twenty-seven percent of the outreach have an EDI focus. Why not a hundred percent? Like, eh, so you twenty-seven percent go to specific groups to to nudge them, but the other seventy-three percent, there still should be an EDI focus in whatever way you're you're moving. So I I just thought that was curious, the way we kind of highlighted that. Why isn't it a hundred percent with an EDI focus?
I mean, it's a fair point, and I mean, I think the focus means that they are specific to those individual communities, not that we're not going there with an intent. But we still obviously have to um attend events that don't have it. And that's ultimately why and why we get invited to universities, to all these organizations across the country. Um, so I mean, that's where that stat comes from. And when we talk about that, twenty-seven percent is over sixty events um last year when we talked about that. So although twenty percent may sound small, i- it's a huge number and a huge lift for a relatively small team. But we can maybe put that in ice until the team have presented, and they'll talk to you all about what we do specifically with the those communities and how we support them, but short and long term.
And Commissioner, if I could just jump in there, that that's also a a a metric that we were asked uh previous, in previous commissions of where are you going for specific communities, specific diverse communities? So it's not that if all of our events, like we we're, we talk about inclusion, all of our events are about inclusion and talking to every single pers- people we can. But we also wanted to track where we are specifically going to a um, you know, the the Basaki Parade and in targeting that community. And and as Rory said, this is not a six-month thing. Like, we we we're taught, we're recruiting families and we're recruiting people that they may not be police officers in the next two years, but they might be five years down the road. And it's engaging and partnering with those communities, with the communities, not just us popping in there because they're having an event.
Okay. Great, sorry, I missed that. Um, so are we ready to move on to the sworn side of the process? Yep. Okay. Um, yeah, so you have some other presenters that you're going to, if you want to go grab them, that would be awesome.
Chair, I'll I'll introduce uh, introduce this one as well. And um uh my comments still stand, as I said earlier, like the fantastic people you're gonna meet, you're gonna hear an awesome presentation by these uh three presenters under Rory's leadership. And uh it just, it's uh, you know, much like on Andrea's team, the the civilian recruitment and the civilian talent acquisition folks, uh, the work that has happened on the sworn recruitment side over the last two years is nothing short of impressive. Uh, and we are, we are the envy of most of our policing partners with the numbers and the targets that we are hitting and the work that's going on and the leadership we are providing. Um, and when, and to Commissioner, um, uh, to one of the Commissioner's questions earlier, earlier, like where where people come to advice? Sworn recruitment is one of those places that they are coming to us for advice because they wanna know how we're hitting our numbers and the work that we're doing. Uh, and as Rory said, we're sharing that willingly, because we're all in the space together. So without further ado, over to Rory to uh opening remarks and introduce his team.
Thanks, Deputy. Um, good afternoon, Chair. Commissioner's extremely excited to be here as always. Um, but today joined with members of the recruitment team. Um, and really, today, we're gonna walk you through the progress and results that we've had over the last twelve-plus months. Um, great questions so far, and it's fair to say that sworn recruitment is a challenging place to be right now, uh, not only nationally, but globally. But hand on heart, I could not be prouder of uh the recruitment team and some of the members that you see in front of you today. And it's not only about the results that we achieved, and the team will dig into them in a bit more detail, but the manner in which they've done it. So we talk about innovation, we talk about creating relationships within the community, and we also talk about challenging status quo. And that is ultimately to allow us to control and influence everything within our power that we can. Um, and as a result, uh, and the deputy alluded to it earlier, we are regarded now as the industry leading, in one of the industry leaders i- in this specific space. Um, that being said, it is a complete team sport, and we know it. And we ultimately know that we could not have achieved any of this without the support and assistance from many, many people and communities. Um, we've had individuals and all the way up to communities welcome us, open up their doors and support us through time, resources, uh, and some some sweat and grit at the same time. And we're extremely thankful for that. And just to name a few, we have uh had support from the Dashmest, the Calgary Alliance for Common Good, Akram, the the Blood Tribe, Sudanese Community, and individuals like uh Rajkatan, who who call in um a few times for the CPC meetings. Internally, it's been all hands to deck as well. Uh, and we've had amazing support from the likes of HR, from digital services and communications to the diversity units. And it truly is uh a sort of team effort there, and their support has been second to none. And some of the videos you'll see today as an example are uh the outputs of that amazing work that they put together. Um, in addition, and it'd be remiss not to say, a huge thank you and acknowledgement to our frontline members who ultimately are our biggest and most influential recruiters that we have out there, as we all know and appreciate and respect that they work in a complex environment. But yet, every single day, they turn up to work with professionalism, with respect, and wear that uniform with pride. And as a result, it drives people to the recruitment unit to then join and somewhat emulate their example. So we are appreciative of their efforts as well. So that's enough for me. I'm going to hand you over to the people who actually do the hard work opposed to just talk about it. I'm going to first hand you over to Director Adam Smith, who his leadership has been instrumental in the progress and results we've seen. Not only that, he is influencing and advocating at that provincial level through his appointment as co-chair of the Association of Chiefs of Police Recruiting Committee. So Adam, over to you.
Thank you, Executive Director Thompson. At the beginning of twenty twenty two. We had two goals in sworn recruitment, hire over one hundred and thirty new officers and ensure we represent Calgary. This was lofty. It's more officers than we'd ever hired based on recent data that we were able to collect. We're in a macro environment where the job of policing is not as attractive as a profession as it once was. I'm proud and honored to work alongside Sergeant Tedley and Constable Shaheen. They bring the creativity to this team. They are the ones who are modernizing our recruiting practices. I hope you're excited as I am to learn about how recruiting at CPS has evolved, about our results and how we're leading the practices across the country.
Thank you so much. My name is Angie Tetley and this is my dear friend, newly promoted Sergeant Ahmed Shaheen. We are both members of the recruiting outreach team, so it's our job to hire police officers. And I honestly say we both love our jobs. We love it. It's the best job in the world. Can we start our presentation, please? Okay. Good? Sorry. Awesome. Okay, so twenty twenty two was a big year for us at the CPS and recruiting. We saw. An entirely new management team in the recruiting unit, myself included. We were all brand new to the unit. Like Director Smith said, we had the goal of hiring one hundred and thirty five people, which was an impossible task. No one thought we could do it. It was almost a joke, like good luck recruiting, go ahead and try to hire one hundred and thirty five people because you can't do it. The most we'd ever hired before in any given year was one hundred and twelve. And so no one thought we could do it. It also included the year, the new inception of the outreach team. We didn't have an outreach team before. It was. One, I felt very terrible for her, one poor person going to virtual job fairs during COVID. And that was pretty much all we could do for several years. So the whole concept of an outreach team was very new. We had no roadmap. We had no plan. We were flying by the seat of our pants and just making stuff up as we went along. I'm very grateful to my bosses who let us kind of go wild. It was great. We also had a major goal to reach out to diverse communities and to make our police service represent our community. We wanted to build relationships and introduce policing as a respectable and professional career. To those communities who didn't see it as that before. We tried new things. We made some mistakes. We learned and we adapted. We recognized the main thing that we recognized in twenty twenty two. Was that relationships were the key to recruiting the best people from our community. So I'm going to play a year in review video because I think it shows or tells a big part of our story.
This year's been super exciting. We have pretty much a brand new team, including management, several file managers and the actual outreach team itself is brand new. So we all have a lot of great ideas and a lot of creativity. We're super excited. We've all come from patrol, so we know how short everyone is. So we actually truly care and are working really hard to recruit the best people that we can. We have come up with a bunch of brand new programs this year, which are super exciting. Today was run with a recruiter. Where members of the public can sign up, just come up for a workout with us. We run them through a circuit or a hard workout and then it's pretty awesome because we've built this really great community of people. That come to CPS, to West Winds, do an awesome workout and support each other through the recruitment and selection process. We've traveled all over Canada. We've been as far as Ontario, DC, Saskatchewan, where we've gone to universities, justice colleges. Even some WHL games where we're searching for applicants from all over the place. In town, we've gone to several major events and we were hosting our own events too. So we're really learning this year, finding out what works best, finding out where we're getting the best applicants, and then we're going to build on that for next year. We were told that we needed to hire one hundred and thirty five people this year, which no one thought that we could do. We actually have hired one hundred and fifty three so far this year. So not only did we reach our goal, we've beaten it. We had a full class of DEOs, the biggest DEO class we've ever had, thanks to the efforts. Of the membership and recommending people. We've recognized that some people struggle with the written testing. They just don't know how to prepare. So members of the outreach team have come up with an AppCat or written testing workshop. Where people can sign up online and we'll take them through how to study and how to prepare for a test. We found great success with that one. We've recognized also that people struggle with their interview skills and we're working on a formalized mentorship program. Where we're going to train members of CPS to be formal mentors. And that way they'll be able to train people and help coach them through the interview process. In the meantime, we're developing a BDI workshop where people can sign up online again and do a workshop with us where we can help them through their interview. And we're also working on some videos that we're going to be putting on our website as well for people to prepare before they even apply. The recruiting outreach team is five people and the best recruiters for the CPS is the membership. You guys are the ones that are out on the street every day. You guys are the ones talking to the public. You're the one in the public face. We can do all the backend work and we can host events and we can bring people in that way. But our greatest recruiters are the membership. So putting those efforts in, answering those questions, sending people to the website, send them to us and recruiting, we're very, very happy to answer all those questions and help people through. The application process if they have any questions whatsoever. If you recommend an experienced officer from another agency and they are successful through classes. You're going to get put up for a fifteen hundred dollar incentive. I think this is the best job in the world. Like, I mean, all of us on the recruiting outreach team have been on for fifteen to twenty years and. We're so excited to come to work every day. We are very proud of the uniform we wear. I'm very proud and grateful for the people that I get to work with. I think it's the best job in the world. I don't know why anyone would want to do anything else. Like it's, it makes me so excited to come to work every day. I love it.
It, well, I, I'm wondering, did we, have we seen this video before?
Yeah.
It is an awesome video. It's really good.
Yeah.
Chair, we did push the video through our social media channel, so that's where you probably would have seen it, but I'm not sure if everybody's had the opportunity to see it.
And and I will say that the enthusiasm and the passion that comes out in that video. In particular, Angela is like super awesome. So it's pretty cool. Yeah, can use the mic though? Can you turn your mic on there, please?
Thanks. Sorry. So the first part of the video, sorry about that. The first part of the video is talking about our run with the recruiter program, which we've. Is a program that reaches out to the community. I'm actually going to speak about it a little bit more later in the in the presentation. And speaking about some of the other cities and provinces that we've been to. In order to look for the best candidates, including going to justice colleges and some sporting events, WHL games. We went to Comic Con, which everyone made fun of me for going, but I got a whole bunch of applicants from that and it was amazing. And they came to our information sessions. It was exactly the demographic that we were looking for, a high percentage of women. That went to Comic Con. We, I talk here about the the largest DEO graduation class that we've ever had. DEO is an experienced officer and a direct entry officer. And I don't know, yeah, now here we're talking about Ahmed and our AppCat workshop, which again, I'll get into some more details later on in the presentation and just some of the programs that we've been, that we've introduced. It is on YouTube if you'd like to to look at it in the future. We're pretty proud of it. So we're pretty proud of the work that we did in twenty two only two, but I'm going to pass it over to my friend.
Okay, so these statistics demonstrate that by exponentially increasing our community outreach events and relationships by one hundred and forty nine percent in comparison to twenty twenty one. That and specifically within diverse communities as well, that we were able to increase the number of applicants by thirty one percent. Of those applicants, we saw forty three percent increase of of people who identified as being part of diverse community. This led to a twenty percent increase in hires from the year before with a significant percentage of our final hires identifying as female or racialized. We see this as a great success. Our classrooms represent or reflect, represent and reflect our our city. We have recruits that range from single moms to decorated Olympic athletes. They come from multiple different countries, speak many different languages. We have an extremely, or and they have an extremely diverse background as well, culture and religions. Our latest graduating class had fifteen languages spoken throughout the group. So the experience and knowledge that they bring only makes our service a better place. As Sergeant Tetley mentioned before, our outreach team is really, it's a brand new concept. And I think we're very fortunate as a team, well, from my perspective, to have amazing bosses all throughout that supported our ideas and initiatives. And we saw that impact directly within our communities. And in in our classrooms, we had social media to reach the most people in the most efficient way. We did Instagram and Facebook stories. Answered questions from many followers and introduced our events and programs that we were holding and some of our initiatives. And then to reach specific diverse communities, we did events on Red FM and some TV channels within those specific communities. We launched several radio and social media campaigns in many different languages, including Punjabi, Hindi, Mandarin, Cantonese, Blackfoot and Saudi Nakota. We also recognized that simply showing up for events with a recruiting booth wasn't enough. And so we really tried to immerse ourselves within the relationships. And as mentioned before, we're we're looking at hiring entire families and communities, not just individuals. Our goal and and strategy was to learn about other cultures and build relationships. While also introducing our profession in the police. To these communities. So we used many different ways to to build bridges and relationships. I can tell you, we have so much more to do in so many more communities to reach out to, but so far we've reached out to the Dash Mesh. Community, Alcon Community, the Sudanese Community. We started doing some work with indigenous communities as well. We took the 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 time to reach out to these communities to listen and learn from them. We went to them also, and this is from the perspective of recruiting, which is kind of unique because we went to them to learn from them. To eat with them, to learn about their needs, because every community has separate or needs and on how they also. Connect and relate to the police. And then we brought them to our our home, our facility to teach them about policing, policing as a career, our beliefs, our values, our culture within the policing. World. And again, those events specifically, we brought food to to, everyone connects over food, so I do at least. Yeah, so thank you.
I don't know if you can advance the slide again or. There we go. So now in speaking about the actual recruitment process, we we made a lot of advancements as well. We hired a marketing and talent analyst. And created a dashboard to analyze all of the data through the recruiting and selection process. We collected these statistics and and data to identify success and failures from our applicants. As well as to identify barriers that some of them may face. And we use this information, we did something about it. We identified several barriers that occurred in the policing application process that were consistent province wide. And we led the change for the province. For example, we developed an app called Grade Cam that was used to skip to score our written testing. And from that app, we learned that there were multiple questions on the exam that over seventy percent of applicants got wrong. And for a multiple choice question, that's pretty significant information. So we took that information to other policing agencies in Alberta, met with the solicitor general and made changes. We also conducted a diversity analysis and recognized that. The gender and sexual diverse and indigenous communities actually had a very high success rate with the written testing. We also identified other soul gen requirements that were a barrier for marginalized community. Communities, including the requirement to be first aid or CPR certified before applying. And this was something that most police police agencies offer anyways. There was also a soul gen restriction that if an applicant was unsuccessfully on the one written testing more than three times, that that would lead to a lifetime deferral. So as mentioned, we led the change. We met with Soulgen and the other agencies to present our findings and our data and statistics to make recommendations. And because of our initiative, five significant changes were made to the provincial wide policing application process. The first one was that the Alberta Communication Test or ACT has been suspended upon further review. The AppCat no longer, you you can take it multiple times. You're not going to be lifetime deferred after three unsuccessful attempts. First aid is no longer a requirement. We've updated our terminology for some of the educational requirements. And we also got approval for the AppCat to be taken online, something that we're working on. It's not quite at that stage yet, but something we're working on. So. These were changes led by the Calgary Police Service Recruiting Unit. As the Recruiting Unit Outreach Sergeant, I also personally sit on the board for the double ACP, the Alberta Association of Chiefs of Police. EDI Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee. This is a committee made up of officers from all of our different policing agencies in the province. And as part of this committee, we work together on improving our background investigations. On applicants throughout policing agencies in Alberta. We wanted to add specific questions to the background investigations. That were specifically related to how the applicant treats people from diverse communities or people that are different than them. So we came up as a committee, came up with questions to specifically find out how these are applicants. Treat people and recognize any biases or concerning behavior of of potential applicants before they're hired by the Calgary Police Service. And while on the topic of bias, the recruiting team, as mentioned, has been working with the University of Calgary and the Art of the Nudge Training. Together, we created a training, we created training and key principles to guide all of our recruiting staff. The principles are all about surrounding biases, cultural humility, context and recognizing our reactions. All the sworn and civilian members of the recruiting team are required to take this mandatory training, which has made a big difference for us. The CPS recruit team, or sorry, outreach team is filled with highly energetic and creative people. And we've come up with a number of internal programs, which we're all talked about in that video, but I'll talk about them now. Not only to create community and relationships, but also to assist our applicants through the policing process. And a lot of them focus on marginalized communities. We host information sessions both in person and virtually. This way, we're able to reach potential applicants basically from all over the world. We've had participants attend from as far as Australia and the Philippines, attend our virtual information sessions. We also host these information sessions that are specific to certain communities. For example, we have a women's only session. We have a GSD community session as well as racialized communities. And these sessions are hosted by CPS members who represent those communities as well. Run with a Recruiter, the blue shirt in the video. Is one of our very highly successful programs that we've created last year. It was created not only to introduce fitness and a healthy lifestyle to potential applicants. But at the same time, it provided them with an opportunity to meet and speak with police officers. And build relationships and a community. And the one thing that we saw that was sort of an unintentional result was. The community that the participants built with each other. So they continue to come to run with a recruiter, not just to speak with us as police officers. But they end up forming friendships and and relationships and they support each other through the recruiting and application process, which is just the coolest thing ever. It's so fun. To see them build this, these relationships. And this program is very highly used by diverse communities to come in and speak with us. I I will tell you one, just recently, there was one lady that came just last week and she is fresh from the Ukraine, cannot speak one word of English and. She she texts, she's on her phone messaging me and she says, how many of these do I have to come to until I'm a police officer? Like, well, it's a little more than that, but but here's some steps you can take. But it was pretty awesome. She was lovely. Yeah, we see people from all different cultures, backgrounds and experience that run with a recruiter. We absolutely love it. Yeah, the second one program that we offer internally is our APREP orientation for for potential applicants. So this gives applicants the opportunity to come in and run our fitness testing before they've actually applied, just to gauge where their fitness is at. And help determine if they're physically prepared for the job of a police officer. If they fall short, which is okay, we invite them to attend our run with a recruiter and we'll help them and guide them through that to reach their fitness goals. The interview is also determined to be a challenging part of the process. So we have developed behavioral descriptive interview workshops for applicants to help prepare them for their interview. We recently shot a series of videos that we're going to be posting on our website to be available to anyone at any time. It's like a little, almost like e-learning modules. We can help you through the interview series. I'm going to pass over to Ahmed about AppCat.
Yeah, and one of our other initiatives was the AppCat workshop. So this workshop is, we found that from the data that we gathered that about fifty two percent failure rate historically. So we developed this workshop to help people not only like know what they're going to expect when they do the the AppCat test. But help them kind of introduce them to the world of policing, talk a little bit about each section. We found that especially. Uh we found that um especially for applicants who have English as a second language, uh a lot of them are very appreciative of this uh workshop. It helps them uh kind of wrap their head around especially the reading component and the vocabulary component. Uh to date, we've had over five hundred uh uh interested applicants uh come to these workshops. Um nothing but tremendous feedback from all of them and a wide-ranging group of people uh and experiences. Also, our our unit is continuously learning. We're trying to improve. We get feedback from people. We try to do new things. Uh and we have a strong, strong focus on people um while while at the same time kind of improving and bettering our processes.
A little advanced if I push it. So oh so moving forward, we have so many amazing plans for twenty twenty-three in the future. And we are definitely on track to put through five recruit classes this year. And we'll continue to recruit police off, police officers that represent our community. Uh with the processes and programs that we currently have in place, we're striving to continue to improve not only our strategies, but but also how we track success. And most importantly, to continue to build relationships in the community. We have several exciting ideas that we're working on this year, including offering online written testing, uh first responders career expo this fall, a women's recruiting bootcamp. Uh and my bosses might get mad at me for saying this, but uh we're potentially considering a podcast as well, where we'll be able to reach out to some members of the community. I'm just gonna put my hand here. We also have been partnering, as mentioned before, we've been partnering with other agencies in Alberta and B C to work together. We recognize that uh policing is a close-knit community and and like my boss mentioned, a team sport. And we want to continue to support and assist other agencies where we can. Um as we said earlier, uh we want to hire the best police officers in Alberta and in the country. And although technically uh most agencies are also actively actively recruiting, so we're really in direct competition with other policing agencies in Alberta. Uh we recognize that we need to work together to promote the profession of policing versus uh versus where you you live. So when we work together with our partners and uh currently we're working with Medicine Hat, Lethbridge, Nelson, et cetera. So we can promote policing as a profession first and as a career, and then the applicant can decide where they want to live. And I don't know if it's gonna work. I really hope it does. But we wanted to end our presentation by giving you the first public look at one of our latest marketing campaigns that's going to be launched very soon called the Calgary Advantage, because I know you'll all agree with us when um we say that uh when I say that as police officers and members who live in this community, we think this is the best city in the world. And we think this is the best job in the world. And we're very proud. I know I can speak for Ahmed. We're very, very proud of the uniform that we wear and the job we do and the people we get to serve in this city. And we think Calgary is the best city to do it. So I really hope this video will play. But if it doesn't, it's it's gonna be launched on YouTube soon. And that will be the end of my presentation. Okay.
Welcome to the city where Big Prairie Sky meets Mountain High. Where the spirit of community flows through the heart of everything we do. Where big ideas and big dreams can take root and families can grow and prosper. Welcome to the city you can call home. Welcome to Calgary.
So I've I know, um so we'll go with Commissioner Campbell, then Commissioner Siddiqui.
But I'm happy to defer to Commissioner Siddiqui because I know this is her favorite topic.
And I know Commissioner Roselle had a question earlier too, so she's.
Okay, so let me just go boom, boom, boom. Okay. Uh thank you so much for your passion and your work, uh Sergeant Tesley, uh Tetley and Sergeant Shashin. I just want to say uh that you should walk with pride in knowing how you led the change and the ability to evaluate your testing criteria and look at things and say, this is not good. Or this needs to change and actually being able to affect that change. The ability to change a provincially standard recruiting question, that's phenomenal. Please give yourself a round of applause, um because it's it's an approach that I wish we would we would see change in so many other regulated professions where there are standard questions that haven't changed since nineteen forty-two. Um in terms of your approach to looking at new things and different things for for recruiting, that's okay. Continue to do it. We're looking to have different folks come into Calgary Police Service. So you need to do it different ways. And yeah, despite the fact that Mr. Thompson got a little a little hot under the collar there, continue to rock the boat. Um the worst thing that's gonna happen is you're gonna fall in the water, and I'm pretty sure both of you can swim.
Thanks for saying that. I I I know I probably not supposed to respond, but I know Ahmed and I have been very, very grateful for the support that we've had from from all of the our management. And we've made some mistakes, so we're very grateful. Thank you for saying that.
Commissioner Roselle.
Anyway, I'll get I'll get that later. Um thank you very much. I uh you know, honestly, excellent results on the recruitment. I love the examples, like thanks for bringing the specific examples of changes that were made. I think that's really important for us to understand those. Um and my question is more kind of actually on the the back end of it. And um Deputy Gil, you would you would kind of mention it takes six to eight months to get through the recruiting process. Um and you guys have been hiring, you know, at the maximum rates you can for for a little while now. I was wondering if you're starting to see any results of the hiring on the stress levels in the organization, you know, on the frontline? Or if it's too soon?
In terms of relieving the stress?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. We're definitely starting to see that. Our uh attrition rates uh have leveled off. Um and we've got some metrics that show in in twenty twenty, we had a um we had some unplanned um thirty-three unplanned retirement, uh pre-retirement members leave because of changes to the pension plan at the provincial level. Um and then in twenty twenty-one, we really experienced our inability to recruit and our inability to train because of the pandemic and the restrictions. And we couldn't get uh we couldn't get people to see doctors for medical testing. We couldn't get uh polygraph examiners in the same room as the applicant. We couldn't get fitness testing done. So we really uh so and then we also had regular attrition in twenty twenty-one. And we had so also changes to the city's uh retirement incentive. And then um as as we've all, as every industry's faced, um uh you know, during and and now even as we get to the end of the pandemic, some people have just not come back to the workplace or have left because of their experiences in the pandemic and said there's, you know, more to life than working. So we had an unexpected uh and unplanned departures. And then we had all those delays in recruitment, which created that huge gap in our in our frontline and our in our credit right across the service. We had lots of stresses. With the work of the recruiting team, a hundred and thirty-five last year, the the pace were a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twelve the previous year, a hundred and thirty-five last year, and on target for a hundred and thirty-five plus this year. Uh we are seeing them, our numbers particularly on the frontline. We prioritize uh uh the chief's uh in his regular job as Deputy Topics Bureau um to make sure that uh the frontline was supported as as normalcy came back into society and people got back to work and back into society. Want to make sure our frontline members um who've worked this entire time had the support and the resources uh to do that. We've seen those numbers come up significantly that we're we're well over that eighty, we're roughly getting close at eighty-five, eighty-six percent factor across the across the districts. And now we're getting to the stage where we can actually start filling the other vacancies in the organization, particularly Deputy Cook's Bureau, Deputy McClellan's Bureau. So we're starting to see the relief trickle across the entire service. We saw the relief first, and that was by plan in Deputy Topics Bureau. Now we're seeing it across the rest of the service. Certainly, we, you know, the the four of us, the deputies and and the chief sat, and we made a conscious decision that we needed to staff H R, which is the recruitment team, the H R folks. Um and we had to prioritize those staffing and bring in the people with the talent and the skills and abilities as you've met today to really um if if you don't have, if you don't have those people and the right people in those positions, we're gonna have a long-term effect on the organization. But because we invested in that early, we're seeing the results of it. So long answer to your question, we are definitely seeing results. Uh we we've starting to see them uh very notably um on the um in our eight districts. And now we're starting to see them uh it it we're actually starting, starting April, we're changing our our philosophy a little bit to balance out the staffing. So it's not prioritization Deputy Topics Bureau, it's prioritizing across the service. So we're getting back to, if I can quote the word, normalcy um in our in our staffing processes. And it's, I know it's a it's a relief for all of us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Roselle. Um Commissioner Siddiqui and then Commissioner Mallon.
Thank you, thank you, and thank you. Um the one of my main reasons for joining commission was because I truly believe that police should reflect the community they serve. And so over, I know that Deputy Chief Gil and Rory have heard my questions over the last two or three years. What are you doing? What are you doing? So I thank you for this, because now I know what you're doing and it's fantastic. Um couple of things, I follow you on LinkedIn. I try to like everything you put, Sergeant. I promote it. I appreciate your enthusiasm. It's fantastic to see. You know, just the simplicity of your posters looking like the community, all the way up to changing questions. Those things make a difference. So thank you for that. Um and then the other thing, I I do have a question, but I'll say this first. I see you everywhere. Every cultural event, religious event that I go to, CPS is there. And I think that says a lot when we're seeing you out there. That's really important. So thank you. And the fact that you take people, you take officers who look like us to those events, that's super important as well. So I have a couple of questions. Um the first one is around, you know, you people mentioned emotional intelligence today. And policing is much more than just can you run and can you jump and all that. What are you telling recruits about having emotional intelligence in the work that they're doing? And how does that work together with um all the other frontline things that they have to do?
Do you want us to take that, boss, or? Yeah, go ahead, please.
There we go. Let's go boy in the mic. Emotional intelligence is something that we ingrain as well as our ethics and values in recruit class, if you all the way through. Um and ultimately, our officers need to be aware of the the behavior that they're exhibiting and also the reactions of everyone else. And that's where it starts. Uh and then we build upon that, as I mentioned earlier, in leadership development training. Um is that where your question was going, or was it more deeper than that?
Well, I think, you know, you talked about running with the recruiter, and that's the physical piece of it. What are you showing on the other side? Like when you're talking to recruits at these sessions, or when you're at the mosque or these other places?
Right, sorry, I thought you meant recruits as in in-class.
That's okay, that's okay. I can take that one. So Run With A Recruiter um is not the answer even to pass the physical fitness test. It's really not. What Run With With A Recruiter is, is exactly what you're talking about. So we just happen to be doing a workout while we're talking about policing. And while we're talking about uh the physical tool, the mental tool, the psychological tool, we talk about, we tell stories. We talk about calls we've been on. We talk about preparing not only for the application process, but preparing for the life of a police officer. We talk about the officers that fell in Edmonton. We talk about current news stories that affect us. We talk about caring for the community. We talk about how um how do you communicate with people who are you know, have a mental illness or who are different than you or who don't speak the same language. We talk about compassion. We really, really focus on our core values and what's important to us, not just running fast and dragging a dummy. Um it's just a really, it's been a really effective way, because basically at the end of every Run With A Recruiter session, we're in a circle and yes, we're in, we're sweating and we're stretching, but we have those deep conversations about emotional intelligence and preparing not only for your written test and the A-Prep, but also for the lifestyle, career and responsibility of being a police officer.
Great answer. My next question, you passed. My next question is around, um you know, you spoke about building that trust with communities and families. And culturally, that's a big thing. It's not just the individual, it's everybody that comes with them. So can you share examples of what you're doing to build that trust with families and communities? Especially because some folks are coming from countries where police officers are not seen in a positive light.
I'm gonna let my friend take that one, because he's excellent.
Um yeah, that's that is a great question. I think uh first thing that we've been doing is addressing that, especially we're like also with the last part of your question about people coming from countries where police aren't necessarily really seen in a favorable uh light. So we address that. We address or like we talked earlier about the differences between the police here and and some of the specific countries that um some of these people come from. As far as what we do, uh well, it's a wide-ranging um the things that we do, like for example, uh with the Alcrum community. Um we went, we did a basketball event. So it's like a very slow event. So I'll I'll get to this because it's not just a basketball event. We went, we want to do a basketball event. When we were there, we found out that some of the younger girls didn't want to play or participate because there were men there. So we we noticed it, we 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 learned about it. And then what we did is we created a women's only basketball, so for for young girls and and women. And then we brought female officers from across the service. Um we did two events. So the first event, we did it at Alcrum, um so they could feel comfortable and trust us. And then there was like food and snacks and they had questions and they were encouraged to ask um what it's like to be a female officer, what are the requirements of being a female officer. Then we followed up with the women specifically to bring them to West Winds. And uh so then we did a soccer, women's only soccer event. And um during that, we did a tour of West Winds. We uh again brought food, uh did a tour of West Winds. We had the cadets come. We had, so we had some some parents there. And they just wanted to know what it's like to be a police officer. So what a great initiative to to get their younger kids through the cadets uh program, so they could learn firsthand about policing uh in in Calgary and in Canada. So these are some of the initiatives. For example, at the Gorgora, the Dash Mesh Center, we went, uh before we do a recruiting event, we went and we volunteered uh to serve food and try to connect with people like uh on that human level and on that person-to-person level. Um and so far, it's been really good. It's been very successful.
Thank you so much. I think uh everyone loves food. Everyone loves food. So that's great. Um thank you again. I uh can't wait till next year, if I'm still here. Um I can't wait till next year to hear the next part of what you all are doing. Um and I can't wait for that podcast either. So I look forward to listening. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Mallon, please.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Uh this is just really an interest, uh certainly in all first responder roles. Fitness is a really important part in the recruitment or one of the the keystones. For years, I've heard people say, as long as you're fit till you pass probation, you're good. So do you have any ongoing uh requirements or accountability? I know there's a culture of fitness in police. But are there any um clear expectations or accountability to stay fed?
I I can answer one part of that question. Uh the one part of the question is with with Run With A Recruiter, with the AppCat workshop, we uh emphasize fitness, not just to be fit for the job, but for your mental health and your uh physical health throughout your career. We encourage people to uh stay fit and engage in and and fitness is, I mean, it could be a variety of different exercises or activities, sports, et cetera. Uh however, that is the only part of that question that I can answer. Uh I will defer to Director Smith or or
I I could take that unless you want to go right.
We make him run stairs every Friday.
I I will tell you, and and I'll get to your question, that uh Rory and 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 the team have been shaming me a lot because uh they they get up some God-awful hour on Wednesday mornings with the Run With A Recruiter and the workouts. And it's way too early for me to get up um until Chief Newfeld showed up about three weeks ago. And now it's now the pressure's on. So I showed up last week and 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 maybe at the break, I show you the pictures, because I I I'm not ready to participate, because it just looks too hard. Um but but I've got the pictures and you should have seen our gym facility in there um in how full it was. It was amazing how Run With A Recruiter started off such a small thing with five or six people and I think, and how many people now?
Uh we've had over eleven hundred people uh attend Run With A Recruiter so far. So our typical classes are about thirty people. Uh and the really, really cool thing about Run With A Recruiter is um we obviously do it in our gym and our in our facility. So the the fellows are in the gym working out in the morning and they kind of look over and they see all these people in these weird blue shirts. And we actually get more and more sworn member uh ambassadors coming out just because uh because they want to be part of recruiting the best people. So not only are we creating this community within like applicants, but also within CPS. Like they come just to just to work out and and hang out with potential applicants. So that's another sort of side effect we didn't really expect to see.
And, and that leads really to, and Angela, and, and just talked about, what I was gonna say next is that. It's become so infectious that even our members, our, our members are now participating and they're joining in when there's space. So Commissioner, to your question about culture and engaging, it's not just a recruiting team that's out with our potential applicants and our recruiters. It's sworn members that are across various sectors, various jobs, who could talk about their experiences and what their career has been. And like really continue to get those juices flowing for applicants to saying, this is the culture I want to be a part of, this is a career I want to be part of. This is the organization I want to be a part of, so many of those, um, many of those things. To your specific question, Commissioner, uh no standard uh that we have in terms of maintaining a certain level of fitness throughout your career post-provation, post, uh, post-training. Um, but, but if you look across our service, uh I would say the, the fitness level is indicative of the culture we have. So every one of our, our, our facilities, some are shared with Calgary Fire, some are CPS standalone, they all have gym and fitness facilities. And um, and they get used very much. Uh, and, and so there is a culture there of this is a tough job and to do your job both emotionally, uh psychologically. And physically, you need to have both good mental health and good physical health, so we do have that culture here. Uh, but no specific mandatory requirement, but certainly a culture of fitness.
So if you ever had um concerns about that, it would just be part of performance management, that, that's a piece of. What's important in a job, right?
Certainly, we, we, we work a lot on the lifestyle, so we will, we will look at from a wholesome uh picture from like a wellness piece. So it won't be strictly just film uh, uh fitness, it will be around wellness.
Thank you.
Thank you, um Sue, yeah, can you turn your mic off? And we're getting way far behind, so one more quick question. Because I think that we have, the video might play now, but uh, Commissioner Song, if you want to ask a question first and then we'll move on to the video.
Thanks, that's for the presentation, uh my question is about another part of diversity is uh neurodiversity, specifically for like technology companies. We're hiring people with a broad spectrum of different kind of autism, IDH, those kind of uh neurodiversity, I think is becoming uh. Like real new focus on diversity uh hiring, so. Uh, other than the physical fitness, have you considered kind of some certain rules, not only uh. It, it's on this topic, but also including civilian and both civilian and strong positions, have you considered those perspective? And also, how do you get uh, the, uh, the example of removing that ADT, is that the one? Yeah.
The written testing act.
Yeah, that's, that's one part of it, but how to like have better outreach to people who is. Fit in the position but may have certain uh reasons of not being able to really help like communicate as other people consider.
Yes, so no diversity is very, very interesting and thank you for bringing that up. I've actually done a little bit of reading on that and, and in civil, in our civilian staffing, we are looking at trying to break down those barriers for folks. And we do actually have a population of neurodiverse individuals in our organization. Uh, but they have self-accommodated and it's not something that we've done really specifically to bring on folks like uh, you know, individuals who are on the spectrum. Uh autism, whether, whether that it's that or, you know, other neu- neurodiverse issues. But it's something certainly that I know, and we didn't get to introduce them today, Director Patrick Mack was here um supporting his team. It's something that we've definitely talked about and we know that there are opportunities within our service, maybe not necessarily as a police officer. But in other uh either civilian or specific um roles, that we could definitely have uh folks. That are neurodiverse in our community and would make our community that much richer, so yeah, thank you for bringing that forward.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, though I think, I think between the two of you, um, you know, you're, you're part of the Calgary advantage in terms of CPS and recruiting. So just a note to share with your superiors that, yeah, I think.
Thank you very much for have.
Yeah, no, so.
No age limit.
No age limit.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you so very much, really appreciate it, thank you all.
And, and Chair, if I could just add one final comment for, for all the commissioners in the room, because I know that some of you uh work, still work in the corporate space. None of these people are available for hire.
All right, with this, um, we have two more um specific reports. That we need to move through over the next uh forty minutes or so. Um, the first one is the, from the Bureau of Investigative Sport and Community Policing, the crime update. And so I'll turn it over to Deputy He, Deputy Chief Topic to uh introduce people for that. And we'll take those presentations and then do a Q and A, then follow up with the second set of reports.
Thanks Chair, uh we'll move right into it, uh and we're mindful of the time, so we'll keep it brief. Uh, we'll start with uh Deputy Cook in the Bureau of Investigative Support and then move to uh back in Deputy O'Brien to do the community policing, Daryl. Thank you Chief, uh thank you Chair, and Chair, as a result of your fulsome opening remarks in your chair report, I can be very brief in my comments. And I think we'll embargo the next monthly updates through Corwin. Uh, but I do think some of my highlights are important to repeat. Uh, as a commission and as a community, you folks know better than anyone, the real and pressing violence uh that we have within our community through twenty twenty-two. Primarily in around shootings and uh violent pharmacy robberies. And as you've mentioned Chair, uh today, since March ninth, there's been seventeen reported shootings in Calgary. And this represents approximately a thirty-seven, thirty-seven percent decrease. I can tell you that those results come from very deliberate and intentional actions across our service. From the Bureau of Community Policing through initial response through frontline patrol to proactive suppression and enforcement activity. And yes, some of these matters take significant amount of time and resources to investigate, to hold offenders accountable. The other mention was we're at two homicides for twenty twenty-three, but we've also progressed as we do in many years on historical homicide files. Where we progressed on three homicide files from previous years. And I'd be remiss not to thank our media partners for amplifying our messages around crime prevention and education and awareness for fraud prevention month. Uh, because we do recognize as a service and as a community that fraud is pervasive within uh the city. And last year in twenty twenty-two, we had about eighty-six hundred reported fraud incidents and we know that's underrepresented. And our best efforts in relation to fraud is making sure our community are educated and aware the harms. That predators and offenders will take to uh defraud our folks of their hard-earned money. With that, I will turn it over to Deputy O'Brien for the community policing update.
Thanks, and uh thanks for your, uh, your comments earlier Chair, uh around the, the work that our members do, I know it's very much appreciated. Uh, I also will be brief, in uh February, we saw uh continued uh quite notable decreases in commercial robberies, domestic violence. Uh residential and commercial break-in enters, uh vehicle thefts and, and car prowling. And uh, we put a concentrated focus on offender management when it came, especially to some of the prolific offenders. That were breaking into our communities' homes. And as a result of that, uh we saw over a forty percent decrease in uh, in those, um, those crimes. Uh, you mentioned earlier about transit, we continue to work with transit on uh, on various initiatives. Uh, every district has some type, every district that has transit going through it has some type of, of uh initiative, either um uniformed or covert. Um, operations on the go and, and that seems to be the standard right now as we continue to work with our partners. If, if I could though, kind of go off script a little bit and, and share with you um, just one particular call. That our members attended last week and is one call in one district, but I think uh. It's something that we're proud of, it, it is the type of work that goes on every day that uh sometimes just uh. Maybe makes the news cycle, maybe doesn't and, and gets missed. And I'll bring you back to March sixteenth and uh just like every other Canadian, uh we woke up to horrible news from Edmonton. Uh, as did our police officers, so they woke up that morning. Reporting for duty uh at six or seven in the morning, depending on their shift. And uh they also heard the news about uh the murder of Constable Jordan and Constable Ryan. As you can imagine, heavy hearts as they hit the streets to, to uh protect our community. Um, and a few hours into their shift here in Calgary, about eleven o'clock in the morning. A call comes in uh from a high school here in Calgary where there's an active assailant, that's the call that comes in. So we have somebody in the school that has stabbed somebody, somebody and is in the school somewhere. Uh, or in this particular case, uh unknown location. School has gone into lockdown, uh as, as they should, so they did a very good job, school did a great job with that. And within two, two minutes and forty-eight seconds, our first police officers arrived at that call. Another two minutes passes by and we now have lots of police officers there to form up uh contact teams. And actually go into that school and search for the offender and also search for people in there that, that may be injured. We know that there's one person that's injured, uh, members are caring for that person, uh that student. Uh, but they're also now looking for not only the offender, but any other victim so that they can uh render first aid. During that call, uh we, we ended up with over twenty-one units, some of those would be two-person units, but at that call. While members are going through that school systematically searching the school. Caring for the students and staff that are in there as best they can. We also uh are engaged in investigation, establishing investigation. And what we have is we have uh, uh the offender identified and we now have covert resources going out. So while there's all this activity within the school, we also have covert resources that we deployed into the community. Also looking for the offender in the event that the offender left the school. We have school resource officers that uh are coming from other schools to assist. We have obviously our patrol officers, we have uh a tactical unit, we have our air services with Hawk One. We have the RTOC that's in command and control of that particular incident, which is just one call. Within, within forty-seven minutes, we've cleared the school. The members are able to determine that the uh offender had left the school. And uh later on that day, we were able to uh, to arrest the offender and charge the offender accordingly. But I, I, I just wanted to bring that up because that's a heavy day for our members. And you know, thanks to the training that's going on, thanks to the command and control of the RTOC. Uh, the Real Time Operations Centre, the sergeants that were on the ground as well. Um, you know, we were able to uh resolve that situation safely. Um, obviously lots of trauma for many of the students and staff that were there. We had some of our officers, including school resource officers that uh stayed behind to provide some support. And ultimately, uh received, um, we did receive a compliment, compliment uh from the school board with regards to the work that was done by our members. But I just wanted to highlight that, I know it's probably a little bit different than, than just talking about stats, but it's one call. Um, we had uh close to forty officers that were involved in that one call, certainly very intense, very scary. Uh, for the, the students, our kids and staff in the school. And I just think, uh, I just wanted to bring that up, especially on March sixteenth, that was a heavy day, so thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for those two reports, um, I'll ask Commissioners if there are any questions, uh Commissioner Nice and Jordan?
Thanks, um, this is really, uh, I think a relatively simple question that shouldn't require much uh thought in, in the. Report that you provided, you talked about an increase in the street and uh personal robberies. I'm not able to kind of distinguish that in the report, are they in the commercial or in the residential part or are they somewhere else?
A street robbery would be um, uh basically a mugging. So, so somebody is outside somewhere in a park perhaps, and we have an offender that wants to come and uh rob them of their cellphone. Seems to be a typical one these days, so it would be that.
So where is that captured in your, in your data, is in, because it doesn't show as a street robbery or a personal robbery. I see one section for commercial, one section for residential.
Uh, we do actually keep that stat, so if it's, yes.
Okay, thanks, I just didn't see it.
Okay.
Are there any other questions, Commissioner Rosell?
Thank you, just a quick question, I um, I noticed in the report there was a, a QR code that District Six had put out on um. On uh, you know, tips for preventing break-in enters, which I thought was awesome, I, you know, I, I don't know, not Googled it, I held my phone up, anyway. Um, and I, I, you know, I was thinking about that and I was thinking like, like I know people can go to the website and see that, but how do you guys kind of? They, do people just have to go to the website and see that or how do you, how do you get those things out? Because you guys come out with, CPS comes out with a lot of great tips, you know, and I know like, like as a. You know, as, as a person, I sign up. To get notifications on things that I'm interested in and I'm wondering, like, do you guys do that or I've, I've not really heard that before? Like, do we, can people sign up to get those notifications?
Uh, no, we don't, we don't have anything like that. Uh, what we are doing though is initiatives like this, especially when they come from our frontline uh members is, is incredible. And uh, and so um with endorsements and, and people saying that's working and, and we're seeing that. Uh, that there are, uh, there is traffic driven to uh, to uh, to the website through the QR code. Um, it's an opportunity for us to continue to expand that citywide. So, so what we see often is that it, it starts small and if we are seeing traction, then we'll move it forward.
Okay, yeah, no, I just, I just thought that was really excellent and I know we see a lot of it and we, you know, we get. Stuff that Heather and her team send out and, and I send out those links to my friends and my family and they're always really appreciative and I thought, you know, it'd be great if people. Could sign up and receive this stuff, anyways, it's just a thought.
Yeah, just to build on that, uh, our social media as well, uh will often push those out, especially the initiatives like the nine PM routine and things of that nature. Crime prevention tips, often it's in conjunction with other things such as traffic safety and reminders that way. So uh, push versus pull, I guess there's different options for us to go forward, but we thought it was great to feature. An initiative that came from the frontline, trying to help people find, find the tips they need and so we can use this moving forward.
Awesome, thank you. Great, thank you, Commissioner Lynch-Parker.
Got it, thanks, um, thanks for the reports. Um, you, you commented in your um report about some of the success that you've had around proli- monitoring of prolific offenders and how that's impacted your statistics. Wondered if you could expand on, um, there's been a fair bit of media attention around the funding announced for ACERT. Um, around gang violence and um, and, and I guess on a related topic, bail reform and, and just how you might um. Uh foresee that impacting or help assisting in your efforts and how the CPS is going to play a role.
Uh, thank you for the question, uh, the funding is through Alert, so the Alberta Law Enforcement Response Teams, I think it was referenced ACERT, which is the independent, that's okay. Uh, so through the Alberta Associations of Chisop Police, the Calgary Police Service put through a proposal. Uh, for a specific dedicated team in relation to gun violence, uh the province announced uh that funding was going to come through Alert. Uh, there's still very much uh preliminary discussions as to how that is going to work. But I can tell you, any sort of deliberate enforcement action, as we've seen through suppression, enforcement and investigation. Will be beneficial to our community in reducing ongoing gun violence. The investments that we have made in this community with our firearms investigative team, which was growth through this commission and through our council. We probably have the best intelligence pitcher on crime guns as we can have or we've ever had. We've made previous investments within our Ballistic and Toolmark Lab, where I can tell you, our lab in Calgary. Services and supports law enforcement across this province because of the pressing need around gun violence across Alberta, not just Calgary. The expansion of the team in Alert provides a greater footprint within the province potentially to respond to gun violence through that funding. Hopefully that answered your question. As far as the bail reform, uh our chief has taken a national leadership role as to some of the reforms that are required. As have our political, uh whether it's city or at the province or at the federal level. Everything, as we've discussed with the commission before, in and around the need for maybe reverse onus. Or things where there is potential legislatively to affect the change that we need to continue to drive down that violence in our, in our, in our community.
Thank you. Great to see we're playing a leadership role there, too. Thanks.
Thank you. And and I'll just comment that I was pleased to see the the discussion about the transit safety initiatives and the fact that, you know, focusing hotspots, using all resources and and covert. And look forward to updates as we go along, just knowing that those things tend to shift around the city and it's just of of interest because I think it's a community concern for the whole city. Any anything else on these two reports? With that, I will say thank you very much for those. And we'll move on to the last set of reports around or the last report on the anti racism action plan update.
Good afternoon, Commissioner and Commission members. Thanks very much again for the opportunity to provide a couple of updates on our work on anti racism and several of our call diversion initiatives. With respect to our civilian community mobilizer and ambassador positions, which will promote two way communication and improve our police service design and delivery to indigenous, black, racialized and marginalized communities. We have made conditional officers to offers to four successful candidates for permanent positions and one limited term offer for two years. After consultation with our Indigenous Relations Team and in consultation with the community, many of our partners, the Calgary Alliance for the Common Good. We're in the process of posting to hire for four indigenous community mobilizers. The Calgary Alliance for the Common Good has been assisting with our communication and the advertisement of these positions to encourage qualified members from the indigenous community to apply. The onboarding team is currently developing job tasks, training topics and standard operating procedures that will help guide the work of our mobilizers and ambassadors. Having the mobilizers join our community services section to work alongside our other teams, such as the Diversity Resource Team, Indigenous Relations Team and the Anti-Racism Team fulfills our ongoing commitment of providing equitable service to all Calgarians. With respect to our anti racism roadmap, in order to progress the work of our anti racism roadmap, we have reposted for the anti racism manager position. The job posting closed on March ten with sixty six applicants, candidates applying. The month, the month of March will consist of interviews, reference checks and the hiring of a qualified candidate to help guide our services work to support and maintain our overall racial equity vision for the CPS. We've already heard the Chair and Deputy Deputy Chief Cook talk about crime prevention, so I will skip a couple of comments on that. You might recall that the External Anti-Racism Action Committee developed twelve action items in June of last year. The committee continues to evolve with new members bringing new lived experiences to advise on these action items. Five out of the twelve action items have been addressed and presented to the committee and documented in our monthly what we did report. The report focuses on one action item per month, where Anti-Racism Strategic Advisor Shu Porter collaborates with the related CPS business units to explore the progression of the work through a racial equity lens. With respect to crisis response projects and other call diversion initiatives. The partnership between Calgary nine one one and the Distress Centre with the goal of diverting calls for service that do not require police response. Diverted to alternative community resources has resulted in the month of February. Approximately four hundred and thirty six calls referred or transferred to two one one. The Community Mobile Crisis Response or the CMCRS pilot is a collaboration between the Calgary Police Service, you might recall, the City of Calgary, the Alex, C nine one one and two one one. Partnered together, we identify and respond to calls from the public who are in crisis, specifically mental health and or addictions. And or suicide calls that are deemed better suited for the CMCRS. As a reminder, these teams are teams are currently made up of two civilian Alex employees and one plainclothes police sworn sworn officer. The CMCRS have been working with community District Four members, AHS Police and Crisis Mobile Teams to ensure consistent enhancements and collaboration and not duplication of services. On February fifteenth, the CMCR is deployed into the field and began taking calls in District Four that were triaged through two one one. The CMCR Operations Committee meets weekly to debrief calls and looks for additional opportunities for additional efficiencies and effectiveness. As a result, as a result of a recent review and upon recommendation by the Alex, the CMCRs expanded into District Five effective March eighth. District Five was selected as the next logical deployment district for the following reasons. CPS data on mental health and suicide complaints was comparable to District Four. And District Four and District Five are adjoining districts. Travel time for the CMCRs between districts is negligible. There are no additional CPS or Alex resources required as a result of this expansion. With respect to dope, our downtown outreach addictions program, a couple of the stats for the month of February. Two hundred and sixty eight total dope dispatch requests, one hundred and thirty eight requests from Calgary nine one one. Hundred and thirty requests from community callers and ninety seven percent of requests accepted by dope. Just a phenomenal opportunity, incredible impact. And finally, in December last year, the CPS and C nine one one worked together to approve changes to the mental health and suicide cards used to divert calls to two on one when police dispatch is not warranted. A couple of statistics from December to February include fifty eight crisis interventions. Eight reconnected with C nine one for support. Seven connected to two on one after police were dispatched. And forty three resolved with two on one without emergency services intervention. So again, just incredible information, incredible statistics, incredible diversion and impact to the people in need. We're extremely thankful for all our partners, for their support and ongoing commitment for all of these initiatives. And I personally thank the commission members who attended with me and Superintendent Rashid to meet with city councillors over the past several weeks where we updated them on several initiatives. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that. And I'll pass it over to commissioners for questions. Commissioner Nice and Jordan, Commissioner Campbell, oh, Commissioner Siddiqui. We'll get those in order. No?
Thank you very much for that report. Just a question about the Community Mobile Crisis Unit. Two weeks, eight calls seems to be relatively low. Obviously, it's a new program. People have to understand that it's available. Have you seen an increase since then? And with the expansion to District Five, has there been further expansion? Thanks.
Thanks very much for your question. So yes, eight is low, and that's one of the reasons why we took a review so early on. I think to your point, it's new and people are just realizing and recognizing what it's about. And we have started to see just a slight increase. And I think with us moving to District Five and the additional awareness and education that we will see additional calls. But as we've always said, you know, one call and an impact to to individuals who don't need police is is a positive impact. But to your point, eight was very low, hence the expansion to District Five.
And so has it increased since then?
Yeah, it has, but I don't exactly have the numbers in front of me. So I can tell you that it is on the increase and we expect to see more with us expanding into District Five.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thanks very much, Chair. Deputy Chief McClellan, I am probably going to ask the questions that no person in the city wants to be talking about. But again, I'm okay with it. I'm going to ask the Hate and Extremism Unit questions. And your report was quite comprehensive in addressing some of the abject violence and hate that's being expressed towards our two S LGBTQ plus community for events that they have run for years that are actually about literacy. And so I'm hoping that in combination with your with your deputy chief colleagues, you can provide a little bit of an expansion on an update with respect to the work. And I would say some of the fairly substantial heavy lift work that the Hate and Extremism Team has done in collaboration with the resource officers and particularly Constable McElroy and Constable Messenger, who I know have been probably doing yeoman's service to to bring to bring some safety comfort and peace to those those members of the community.
Thanks, Commissioner Campbell, for your question. So you're absolutely bang on. Both of those officers along with the frontline officers have done a lot of heavy lifting. There's been lots of engagement, lots of consultation, lots of reach outs to to victims. And, you know, sharing with them what the options are available to them, what resources are available to them through our, through us, through our partnerships. And we are doing our best to ensure that that does not continue in our city. And working really hard to to make a difference and show that really there's zero tolerance for that kind of behavior. Not sure if that's what you're looking for, but they have really been doing a lot of work and working hand in hand with many people from the community and our partnerships and the frontline to to do the best that we can.
Thank you. Commissioner North Pagan, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I also had an update that I wanted to talk about. I was just recently invited up to a a conference in Edmonton. It was titled Pathways to Justice for M M I W G two S plus. And one of the things that I always, I always tell everybody here is that the work has already been done. We just have to pick it up and we have to have a look at it. And one of the the policies, and this is a working group that came together here in Alberta, to actually discuss what the hundred and thirteen pathways to justice are for these these folks in that fall into these social areas. And one of the recommendations there was actually an M M I W G two S plus Oversight Committee with, you know, but that's policy. What I wanted to actually mention is that, you know, within indigenous people, we we act, we we have humor. We use humor in our in our meetings. And I walked by this room where everybody was just really laughing and I passed by and some CPS people were in there passing balloons with their knees to each other. And and I was like, what? But, you know, they were there and they actually responded to this hundred and thirteen pathways to justice with some of the, some of the some of the programming that Deputy Chief Katie McClellan has just spoken about. So I really wanted to commend all those things that the work that they were there and they were there to strongly answer questions on the, you know, on behalf of the Calgary Police Service from the citizens. And I really want to give a shout out to Constable Allen Chamberlain for taking that heavy load from the public and the engagement was really positive. But I would really recommend folks in this room, especially if you're working in all these areas, the work has already been done by the community. And it is called a hundred and thirteen pathways to justice. Recommendations of the Alberta Joint Working Group on Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls. So I just wanted to throw that out on the table. Thank you. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you very much, and thank you for highlighting that. I think it's a good reminder for all of us that there has been a tremendous amount of work been done. And we're still working on it. So thank you for that. I have one one general question for you about you referenced often in terms of partnering with the Alex and especially the dope teams. Given that we are utilizing them more often and asking, how are they doing with their resourcing? Given that we're relying on them, we've got a whole machine that's, as we heard earlier, working on recruiting and resourcing. How are they doing? And is there anything that we need to know about that?
Thanks for your question, Chair. So I I can't really speak on behalf of them, but what I will share is that I would say that they're probably struggling like us, attracting individuals just because of the competitive market out there. But what I can share is they have hired incredible people onto their teams who have been amazing. We have amazing partnerships, amazing relationships. I think like every outreach community partner who is looking to make a difference, there's always funding that's a concern. And, you know, we've talked in the past about the sustainability of CSIF and the other funds that we have. So, you know, the future, what it looks like for dope and some of our other partners, you know, the vision is to be able to expand citywide. But there are only so many limited resources. But to answer your question, I think they've done the best that they can with them, the talent pool that they've been able to access and just bring incredible people onto both their teams is that that has just worked seamlessly with our frontline officers and the rest of our partners in the Diversity Resource Team to 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 get to the vision and accomplish what the objectives are that we've set out to do.
Thank you very much for that. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you very much, Chair. I promise it's super quick. In your report, Deputy McClellan, under you had one point three. And it was a progress on the anti racism roadmap. In there, you had an addition. It's just one point two, sorry. An addition of an indigenous investigator to the missing persons unit. That's a small sentence in that report, but it's a massive thing. This is a small change that will make a substantial difference with respect to investigations, specifically with respect to missing murdered indigenous women and two spirit girls and women. And when we think about what we learned from the missing and missed report out of Toronto Police Service. This is Calgary, again, leading in that in that space of missing persons to recognize the plurality of our community and the very specific needs within the indigenous community as it relates to N M I D two S. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosell?
Thank you. I have two questions. One is about the four hundred and thirty six calls that were diverted by to two one one. I just was wondering, was that at all limited by resources? Like, could more calls have been diverted if there was more resources available? Or were you kind of maxed out on a number of calls that needed to be diverted?
Thanks. Excellent question. So probably limited to the resources that we have. We are looking to expand them and there is additional funding coming that we hope to be able to share soon and to expand those resources. So we will see additional calls.
Thank you. And the second question was around, I know in your report you commented that that you've evaluated the body worn camera program from an anti racism and inclusion lens. Were there any major findings that will change the program?
Off, thanks for your question. Off the top of my head, I don't think so. We had the External Anti-Racism Committee have a look at it. But nothing really that comes to mind that would change the philosophical, you know, view and and the SOPs that we have. There might be some some slight tweaking and some things about it, some additional transparency and some education. But other than that, Commissioner, nothing jumps to mind here.
Thank you. Any final questions? Seeing none, I would just like to thank everyone from this service for those presentations. And I know that there is a lot of people working on the presentations behind the scenes as well. So if you can pass on our thanks to them as well, because I know it takes a lot of work to to put these things together. And with that, we're going to move on to the agenda items related to the commission itself. There is not a report from the executive director for this meeting, so I'll move on to the representative updates. These are commissioner, these are from the commissioners who represent our commission on various associations and committees. I'll start on by calling Commissioner Tsong to please provide a report on the Alberta Association for Police Governance.
Thank you, Chair. Report is written. So any questions? If not, we can proceed. Thanks.
Are there any questions for that? Seeing none, I'll move on to Commissioner Siddiqui for the Canadian Association for Police Governance.
Thanks, Chair. My report is there. I'll just highlight one thing, that the annual conference is taking place in August in Newfoundland. And our hope is to actually have Calgary represented that conference because normally it's become more east coast, so hoping to get Calgary. And to talk about specifically how governance and operations work together on EDI issues as well as alternatives to call response. So we'll, I'm hoping that we'll have great representation there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Siddiqui? No. The next report is from myself. And I would just like to highlight, I sit on the Calgary Police Youth Foundation Board. And of note there that one of the programs that they have sponsored over the last number of years is the ISSP, so the Integrated School Support Program. All of these are done in conjunction with police service people. And the province identified this a couple of years over the last few years as being a really successful model for support for youth in schools. And as a result, for support for youth in schools. And as a result, have provided funding to encourage the expansion of the program outside of Calgary. Uh, and I just wanted to say that it's another indication of Calgary programming, especially in prevention and around youth that um doesn't often get noticed, but is uh is finally being noticed and and hopefully we can expand that um outside of the city of Calgary. So that and the rest of my report is in the uh, in the notes. Any, any questions for myself? No. Then we will move on to Commissioner North Pagan. Uh, and she is a representative on the Alberta Law Enforcement Response Team's Civilian Advisory Committee. Commissioner North Pagan, do you have any comments or things you'd like to highlight?
Thank you, Chair. Um, as as you are aware, that C A C um is looking to take more of a consolidate, consolidative role um with the Board of Directors when it comes to the uh business plan. We are currently in the process of just putting together ideas among the committee before we table those ideas. But other than that, uh, the meeting was held March second, which I could not attend. And I will be intended in attendance at the next meeting. Uh, be willing to take any questions if there are any. Other than that, that's everything.
Are there any questions? Nope, seeing none. Um, we will move on. So thank you very much. And again, some of the extra work that the commissioners do for all the various associations uh around the province and the country. Um, so that's the end of the presentations and reports for today. We'll now invite public guests who've registered to speak to do so. Our public participation process is designed to balance the desire to hear from the public with the need to keep meetings at a reasonable length. Those of you who register to provide a presentation will have four minutes to speak, followed by commissioners having an opportunity to ask brief clarifying questions. Those who register to ask a question will have two minutes to speak, followed by a member of Commissioner Calgary Police Service having two minutes to respond. Please keep your comments to the topic you provided when you registered. We cannot discuss a complaint against any specific employer or interaction with the police. If you'd like to discuss a complaint against an officer or others, please contact our Public Complaint Director or the Calgary Police Service Professional Standards Section, so it can be properly addressed. I would also like to thank everyone who took time to send us written submissions prior to this mo- meeting. Uh, there were several this month. They've been provided to everyone on the commission and we appreciate your insights. Finally, a reminder to members of the media that we will hear from the public first and then we'll hold the media availability for you following this. So uh, it could put through the first speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Our first speaker is Ms Amber Cannon, and she would like to ask a question uh related to how employees who get stationed in youth think are screened. Um, Ms Cannon, you should be able to speak now.
Yeah, afternoon, Commission. Um, first off, I would like to send my condolences about the officers you have lost at um the Edmonton Police Service. Um, a while back, um, there was a report that Constable Emmett was assigned to work at Youth Link Calgary Police's Services Interpretive Centre that works primarily with children in youth. No information has been publicly shared by CPS assigned. Why CPS assigned an officer who had been disciplined for sexual indecency against me, a vulnerable Calgarian? Why he was sent there to work? I do applaud the Police Commission for looking into this and letting me know that the CPS did not have an adequate process to screen officers being placed in that area at that time. I would like to thank the Calgary Police Commission at this time for reviewing this. I understand that Calgary Police Service has now changed that process to ensure that officers misconduct is considered when officers are being reassigned so that this can't happen again. I would like to know how officers are now screened for postings at Youth Link and what measures you have in place now so that CPS will be held accountable if this should ever happen again.
Thank you very much for the question, and I'll turn that over to CPS for a response.
Uh, Chair, to speak generally, uh, we have improved our processes and I could speak to several things that we've done. One is that um uh, is there's closer collaboration between professional standards and human resources. Uh, I think that was a gap that was identified previously that resulted uh in this particular example. Uh, their duty status review process has been uh, is has been improved and uh, is much more coordinated between those two areas. And at our weekly professional standards meeting on Wednesday afternoons, both professional standards and HR personnel are there and they could track those um uh decisions and then imply those, apply those in their particular areas as they move forward um i- in the various staffing processes. So at a high level, those are three things that we've introduced into the process to ensure that we're mindful of where our members are placed um and for what reasons they should or shouldn't be placed in a particular area.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Ms Cannon, for your question. Uh, I appreciate your taking the time to speak with us today. And do we have another one?
We do, Chair. Thank you. Our next um, sorry, our our next public presenter is Mr Eddie Su, and he has a question related to members' compliance with standard operating procedures as well as the upcoming police reforms. Uh, Mr Su, you should be able to speak now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, I have a great appreciation and admiration uh for the, I have to say, uh, for the CPS executive. You had done a great job in laying out a great vision to pursue a high level of uh police professional standard, upholding justice, eradicating systematic racism, which is great. So when I try to bring to your attention uh of all this uh uh problems uh uh in the previous uh meeting that like the individual police uh CPS officers failure to the standard procedure compliance and uh enforcement standard uh inconsistency, you had made great tangible effort to understand the detail and uh determine to make a change. So I have to admit that uh I truly highly appreciate that. Uh, however, as I have more opportunity to interact with various uh CPS departments, especially uh the professional standard section, uh P S S, I have truly understand actually the difficulty to eradicate systematic problems. So here's why. The P S S uh professional standard section, as I understand it from its name, is the ultimate goalkeeper for upholding the police professional standard for CPS. But the with the um interaction with uh uh P S S uh uh going through the uh complaint handling uh process, what I actually uh uh find is is tolerance of CPS officers failure to standard procedure compliance and enforcement standard inconsistency make me really scared. And it could be a reflection of the implicit culture that could have an impact to uh on every single Calgarian. So I'm not sure, like, I think probably the the comment is actually pretty bold. I I'm not sure, like, whether I could be able to provide any uh specific detail. Uh, if you want to know more about it, I could definitely provide some more detail, but like uh currently as I uh and 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 many from the community actually perceive that even if the P S S is actually not living up to the uh standard procedure, that the frontline officers should comprise those procedures or uh enforcement standard in consistency is something common or just nothing unusual? I think that would be probably quite scary and probably like need some attention from from the CPS executives. So another, uh, the second question would be, uh, is there any upcoming policy that could probably like realize the new police reform of handling the uh complaints uh uh like probably like handle rather now uh with internal CPS uh departments, but rather uh by by external uh parties. And if so, uh, how could that probably like uh have an uh impact on the existing uh complaint uh processing? Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Mr Su. I will um turn that over to Calgary Police Service to respond to both current and possible prospective plans.
Thanks very much, uh, Mr Su, for the question and comment uh about uh professional standards. Uh, you know, as as you know, we have SOPs in place around how we uh expect our officers to interact with the community. And uh, when those maybe don't uh occur or there's question as to how they've occurred, that opportunity to put in a complaint through P S S does exist. And when we look at some of our uh discipline over the past year, in twenty twenty-two, I think thirty-six percent of sustained uh discipline was for insubordination of those types of things. So we do take it seriously when things like that do happen. Uh, but we certainly uh, like if there is other feedback that you would like to provide, it sounds like you're well connected in with P S S and we could uh follow up with that. As far as the Police Act and and some of the changes coming there, certainly from a transparency lens and and working with community, we're receptive to to those types of things. Uh, so very willing to to learn as as that moves forward with the legislative changes. Anything else, uh? Catherine? Oh, that's good.
Thank you for your question, Mr Su. And again, if you wish to follow up, you can connect with the Calgary Police Service uh directly with the executive or P S S, um, or perhaps the Complaints Director uh for the Commission. Are there any more speakers? No, thank you. So thank you um to everyone for joining us today and for the questions and comments that came forward, including the written ones. The public participation session brings us to the end of our agenda, so we'll now adjourn the public portion of this month's commission meeting. Thank you to everyone for coming and I hope you have a gra- great evening. Acting Chief Toffick and I will remain behind to answer questions from the media. Everyone's welcome to stay and watch our media availability, uh, but only recognized members of the media will be able to participate. Commissioners and members of the service participating in the in-camera portion of our meeting um will take a fifteen minute break uh after we finish media um before continuing on. So with that, um, if you can possibly be as quiet as you need to be if you're going to leave now, uh, we'll move into the media section.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, we are just gonna quickly reshuffle the room here and so that um Acting Chief Toffick is next to the Chair. And then we'll be able to take questions. Uh, members of the media, if you want to put up your hand when you have a question, then we will we'll call on you. Uh, if you do not have a media outlet in your name, um, please add it as I may not know who you are. So just give us one moment and then we'll we'll call on you, Adam Toy first. Excellent. Thank you for your patience. Uh, I'll give you permission to talk, Adam. And you may go ahead with your questions, Adam.
Uh, yeah, thanks so much for uh taking my questions this, I guess it's this evening now. Um, a quick question about the the decline in shootings and other crimes. Um, wondering if if uh, a question for the 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 Acting Chief, wondering if you can uh peer into your crystal ball and and let me know if you think uh, or if your team uh anticipates that trend to continue as we continue to continue through the year. Uh, and if you've got any thoughts on how seasonality may affect uh these numbers.
Thanks for the question, Adam. And certainly uh, seasonality does play a role, and we have seen that historically in our crime data. Uh, we have seen a a fairly long-term trend on some of our property crime, and we were wondering through COVID whether that would be sustained. Thus far, we're seeing it continuing in that regard, and we're very pleased about that. Uh, with our priorities for crime reduction in twenty twenty-three, we've set a very strong focus around violent crime as well as paying attention to property crimes such as break and enters. So uh, we're hopeful, we're cautiously optimistic that that will, that trend will continue. And we certainly are deploying our resources to try to focus on those areas. So hopeful that it does. If I had a crystal ball, uh, I'd love to be able to predict that.
Uh, thanks. Uh, in in the same kind of vein, uh, regarding uh policing along uh transit and the and the C train lines, um, I I I I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on uh whether or not uh the the work being done by the your officers and peace officers, Calgary Transit Peace Officers is going to be enough to be able to address some of the um disorder, drug use, et cetera, uh, that we're seeing on uh C train lines and at C train stations where if if CPS would like to see other kind of supports be put in place to help uh, you know, ordinary Calgarians to get around the city.
Thanks for the question, and uh there are very complex uh social issues that come into play around safety on transit and not just in Calgary, but we see it in other jurisdictions. Uh, you may know, uh, there's a report, I think it's going to council in uh quarter two here where the city's doing a study or looking into fair gates and things of that nature, different options to try to address safety. Uh, we are working with our transit partners on that and providing input to that. I I think it's it's multifaceted as far as the things that need to happen. Uh, certainly from what we're seeing, the efforts of our police officers and the peace officers with transit uh do have an impact, but it's a big system and there's a lot of places to to deal with. And we're mindful of things such as displacement into communities and things of that nature. So it's a broader broader conversation than just the L R T system or the C train system. But uh, we're looking forward to working with transit around that.
Okay, thank you, Adam. Uh, we will now move on to Tiffany Goodwin at uh, sorry, at City News.
Hi there.
Hi Tiffany, we can hear you.
Um, so just on the on the shootings, uh, mentioned that there was thirty-seven percent shootings than this time last year. Um, any indication on why that is? And then reflecting back, I guess what's different, you know, from this year to last year in terms of um, I guess combating uh gun crime in the city?
Thanks for the question, Tiffany. Uh, we've been putting a lot of resources to the focus on gun crime uh over the past ye- over a year. And I I think that uh those efforts do pay off. The amount of crime guns that we're seeing uh taken off the streets, it's it's a frequent occurrence. So we, I can't say causation, but I certainly can say correlation in some of the efforts that we are doing and the impacts that we're seeing from a community safety perspective. And a lot of resources go into addressing those gun crimes. So uh, we're continuing to focus on that. So hopefully we can keep those numbers uh reduced.
Great. And then you guys mentioned that you took twenty guns off the street this month alone. Can you guys just talk a little bit about where you're finding them? And are they um, are these offenders like um, are they like known in the system? Are they regular people known to carry weapons?
You bet. As far as where they're located or where we find them, it's really across the spectrum. Often, they may be in vehicles, crime vehicles, uh, which may be linked to things like stolen autos and things of that nature, vehicles used in crime. Uh, others would be as a result of uh execution of search warrants or search warrants at properties, uh, which, you know, we work those files to the progression, at which point we can seize those things, get them out of the hands of the offenders and hopefully reduce uh the crimes that would subsequently be be committed. Uh, so as far as uh, you know, what's what's different or what we're seeing, uh, you know, it's really uh as the whole spectrum of types of guns and the offenders that are using them. Some of them are previous offenders, others maybe don't have significant histories. It really varies.
Great. Now I just have another question in regards to um the C train. And I just saw on Twitter that there are ongoing operations underway to focus on open air drug traffic or drug use on C train lines and platforms. There's been a lot of videos and stuff like this on Twitter and on Facebook. Can you just talk a little bit about um what you guys are doing to combat uh drug use on the C trains?
You bet. Uh, so we are doing overt and covert uh type of operations across the city. I won't get into the sp- specifics on the covert side for obvious reasons. Uh, but it's um, uh, it's safe to say that we'd be focusing on those individuals that are trafficking drugs uh as opposed to maybe vulnerable people that would be users. Uh, so that would be the emphasis there from a o- overt perspective. We have operations including uh increased police deployment and peace officers working with our partners there to focus on the hotspots. So it's really intelligence-led. Uh, and we see that, you know, some of the stations that were causing us more problems through proactive efforts, we've been able to reduce those. So we're really trying to do a a full system approach, but we see uh, we see that popping up in different locations. So we're really trying to do a full system approach, but we see we see that popping up in different locations. Okay, thank you, Tiffany. We're going to go on. I I believe this is global. They they have an odd name, but I recall it coming up in another meeting. So if it is global, please go ahead and ask your question. We we can't hear you. You're unmuted, but we can't hear you. Okay, so we we can't hear the question. So we'll move on. Does does anyone else, any other media have questions? You can put your hand up if you'd like another round. Okay. Oh, we heard something.
Hi there. Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you, yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for bearing with me there. This is Gabby Rios with Global News. And I just wanted to ask the question because of course it's been a very tragic few months for the policing community with respect with the level of violence. Everyone has been facing, especially with the officers, losing their lives in the line of duty here. So. I just wanted to ask into regards of that, how has the impact been towards your recruitment process with sworn officers?
Thanks for the question. We've been able to continue with our recruitment efforts. I mean, these types of situations certainly shine the light on policing as an occupation. And, you know, we have a lot of great people who are willing to step into these roles. And the sense of community service that comes along with it. So we, at this point, haven't seen a decline. But that's something we'll be monitoring. I have to give kudos to our recruitment team to. Show the, you know, the very positive side of policing that we've been able to emphasize. Granted, these situations fortunately are are quite rare relatively speaking. And despite that, you know, what we've seen in recent past, we've been able to continue our recruitment efforts. So and we hope to do so.
Perfect. And I just wanted to ask one other question here into regards, you know, we kind of heard about. The day when we lost Constable Jordan and Ryan and that stress factor that so many of your officers face. Can you speak to me a little bit about? The resources available for them and how you guys been handling kind of that that stress factor?
You bet. That situation on March sixteenth has a profound impact on not just our members, but the family members of our members. When they go to shift, each and every shift, whether it's day or night shift. You know, when you say goodbye and you go to work with things like this happen. It makes that all more meaningful at the time. But we're very fortunate in the CPS to have their very strong resources. From psychological services and and well being. We have encouraged our supervisors to engage their team members, just to make sure everyone's doing all right. And also, we have a lot of supports in place such as peer support. Twenty four seven support line across the service to make sure our members and their families are doing okay. These things do have a big impact and it will take some time to work through. But we know that we're here for each other and we're certainly support in places of support for our colleagues at the EPS. Many of our. Our members have friends, colleagues, family members that work for EPS, so we're there for them as well. Okay, thank you very much. Tiffany, you have your hand up again. Do you have another question?
Yeah, sorry. I just forgot to ask about ghost guns. I know that there was a presser a couple of months ago about three D printed guns. And then I saw in Edmonton, there was also a news article saying they're also seeing this as well. How big of a problem is it in Calgary? And are you seeing more of them since we last? I guess spoke with police about three D printed guns, which I believe was in the summer.
It's been fairly consistent from our recollection. We did note an increase last year in. Three D printed firearms or the receivers for those firearms. So we are watching that very closely. We are fortunate to have. You know, firearms investigative team and our ballistics lab and such, so we can do the follow up as needed to address those. But it is something that across Canada, it's it's an issue that we're all paying attention to. Okay, any other questions, Tiffany?
Uh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay, so we have no other hands up, Chair. So that concludes our media availability.